First of all, business is the minutes. There was some technical issue with the minutes. I think we just got them tonight, so we're not going to ask for approval tonight. Give you a chance to review them because the minutes are from the last month's three-hour meeting. So we'll go over it. We'll approve them next month. First on the agenda is a continuation of public hearing for Homeland Towers. Ms. Gordioso?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the boards. Robert Gordioso with the law firm of Snyder &amp; Snyder on behalf of Homeland Towers and New York S.M.S.A. Limited Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless. Mr. Chairman, we did submit a few items since the last meeting. We submitted two supplemental RF engineering reports. Just to summarize those reports, we did an additional drive test because there was some question about the drive test and a request for additional data. If you recall, we had originally submitted data, drive test data, back in the summertime. We did a second drive test. There was also a request, even though it's not required by the code, for certain technical details such as access failure rates and drop call failure rates. And we submitted documentation on that showing that it's well above the standards.
Where is that? I'm sorry.
That was in the supplemental report regarding the Campanelli &amp; Associates memorandum, comments at the December 11th public hearing, and an independent drive test from PierCon dated December 20th, 2017.
Okay. Can you explain the drop calls to me? I'm a law staff. What page is that on?
Sure. Give me a moment.
Sure.
So the data is set forth in the exhibit located at Exhibit D, and the discussion is in the report on page six under item number five under Key Performance Indicators.
I see Exhibit D says McKeel's Corners. Is that what we're looking at?
Correct.
Okay. And what does this show me?
This shows the access failure rates, meaning that when a mobile device tries to access the system and there's a failure to access it, it shows that rate, and it also shows the rate of dropped calls. And what we looked at was McKeel's Corners because, again, the purpose of the proposed site is to eliminate the gaps that are left by McKeel's Corners and replace McKeel's Corners. So in locations where McKeel's doesn't cover, this site will actually cover, as we've shown by the drive test data and the various propagation maps through the months. And there was a question at the last meeting. There was a request for this type of data, and your consultant had specifically indicated that we should submit it in connection with his report, which I believe was dated December 21st. And we had submitted that in the report dated December 20th.
Okay. I have to be honest with you. Looking at this, does anybody understand it?
So...
Wait a minute. Let me finish. I would say drop calls. I was talking about, you know, me. I understand what you're saying here. This is, you know, pretty to an RF engineer. Drop call percentage. Okay. Looking at the drop call percentage. I guess my simple question is, what is the percentage of dropped calls?
So...
Any line?
Yeah, so it bounces, and it depends on the particular sector, and the data goes up to over 10%. And as you recall, last month, your own consultant had indicated the standard of being 2%, and Verizon agrees with that. And in this case, the drop call data exceeds routinely 10%.
What does it say there?
That says it in the report on page six.
Oh, in your report. It says it. Okay. But I can't tell it by looking at this, but it tells you in the report. Okay.
Question. We have no frame of reference. How does this compare to other places?
Well, that's the point, is that the standard is 2%, and this is well over 10%.
That's your standard.
That doesn't mean that's the way it really is around the, with most cell access. Just because Verizon has a standard of 2%, that doesn't mean it is 2% for everywhere. Do you know what I mean? No, I'm not really following. The standard of the design is to be less than 2%. And the way the system is currently configured, it's exceeding that and exceeding it by a vast wide margin, over 10%, showing that there's an excessive number of dropped calls on the site that we're trying to replace. Because, again, the purpose of this particular application is to replace the site that's not covering particular areas in Phillips Town. And when you look at the topo maps, when you look at the drive test data and you look at the different propagation maps, the reason is very apparent. Where the McKeel's Corners site sits, number one, is an elevation that's lower or around the same height as the surrounding mountains. And in fact, if you look at the area we're trying to cover on Route 9, there's a 500-plus-foot elevation to the east-northeast, and then Route 9 drops down. And that's the exact spot where we can't cover with the McKeel's Corners site, even with the increased height that we've shown, particularly from the height of 100 to 110 feet that's there now. And then the same thing goes to the south, to the south and southwest on that corner of Route 301 and Route 9, whereas the location of the proposed site, even at the lower height of 140 feet, is situated in such a location that it's not being blocked by that topography, and it's able to cover those areas. But, again, the data, which is not required by your code, was requested. We submitted it. We believe that it shows further proof that there is a gap in service.
I have a question. You've got all kinds of different colors on this chart. What do the different colors represent?
Sure. So the different colors relate to the different sectors. So the McKeel's Corners site, like most cell sites, has three different sectors. And then what we also did is we showed two different frequency ranges, because, as you recall, Verizon operates at different frequency ranges. So if you look at the chart that's on the bottom, for instance, that first color with the line through it and the square box, that's the McKeel's Corner Alpha Sector, which is at the 100-degree azimuth at 700 megahertz. And then the blue is McKeel's Corner Alpha at the 2100 megahertz.
Okay. Let me ask you a question. And reading the report from Mr. Mckee's, I guess him and your consultant, Mr. Feehan, both agree that if McKeel's Corners was at a height of 190 feet without Nelsonville Tower, I mean Nelsonville turning down a tower, that McKeel's Corners is a better site than Vineyard Road?
No, that's not correct.
It is correct. It's in the statement.
Okay. So that's not correct. That's not correct. Let me explain why.
It's a correct statement.
Mr. Chairman, I...
Well, let me get the statement for you.
Go ahead.
Let me start with getting the statement for you.
I don't want to have a bickering back and forth.
I don't. I'm not bickering.
I'm going to tell you right now, it's not a correct statement.
I'm not bickering.
For a very simple reason.
Don't tell me it's not true. If I want to look, I'm going to read the statement.
Go right ahead and read it.
Take your time. Okay.
But please read the whole statement.
Oh, yeah. Read the whole statement. Sure. Let's see. I don't know what I have. Where was it here? I'm not looking up. I got it. Yeah. Okay. It's dated December 21st from Mckee's Associates. As requested, this letter provides professional opinion relative to the justification for proposed cell site and the 140-foot tower at 50 Vineyard Road, Phillips Town, New York. And if determined to be necessary, whether alternative sites may satisfy the coverage requirements for reliable in-building service in the area identified by the applicants along Route 9 and Route 301. To facilitate making these decisions, the predicted coverage plots from the various PierCon Solutions RF reports were employed. The use of calibrated predictive computer-generated coverage plots is well-established in the wireless industry, so there is no reason to doubt the use of the supplied coverage plots for predicting the RF signal levels for this application. However, RF coverage plots are not the only criteria in determining the real-world impact of a wireless network's performance. Although there is a correlation between RF signal strength and network performance, it is also true that if the RF signal strength is less than the service provider's targeted performance objective, it does not mean that calls or data sessions cannot be established or sustained. This was demonstrated by the evidence provided by the residents. Rather, it only means that statistic success rate of those calls and data sessions is reduced. A more definite measure of impaired coverage is the actual call performance records in the area of consideration. The user equipment generates this information, the network elements record this data, and all service providers utilize these records to determine performance of their network. The board requested the call performance data, but the applicants refused to request claiming that it was proprietary, even though such information has been presented for other Verizon applications when it was to their benefit. The signal strength plots for the existing Verizon network in Phillips Town show reference signals received power at 700 Mhz as less than 95 Dpm's along a northeast section of Route 9 in an area of Route 301 west of Route 9. However, at 105 Dpm, DBM, I'm sorry, the in-vehicle target value, the same areas offer reliable service. This indicates that the RSRP values in the area of the in-vehicle service for the claimed compromised area. However, the applicant on this application assessed less reliable in-building service. So I guess what he's trying to say is that the in-building service is the problem, not the vehicle.
Not necessarily. At 700 megahertz, the in-building is the problem. At 2100, it's also in-vehicle.
So you're saying it's a problem in both?
Correct.
Okay. The applicant has indicated their September 6, 2017, seeing PierCon RF report that the affected population in the area considered in determining the impact of the reported less reliable coverage. The RF report states that according to the 2010 census report, there were 430 residents in the targeted area exclusive of the business along Route 9. The exact area is not explicit, but it will be assured that includes both the area around Route 9 north of 301 and route 301 west of Route 9. This is a relatively small population number to start, and it must be further adjusted to represent actual Verizon subscribers. According to the Pew Research Center, as of November of 2016, 77% of all Americans owned a smartphone, and an additional 18% owned a basic cellphone. Only smartphones can access LTE technology. The technology of focus of the application of the 77% who own a smartphone, 35.7% are Verizon subscribers. As a result of the 430 people in the area of concern and applying these nationwide averages to the limited area of Phillips Town, approximately 119 people could potentially be Verizon subscribers. According to employees and customers, consequently, an additional 25% will be added, resulting in approximately 150 total potential Verizon in-building subscribers divided between Route 9 and 301 areas. By any measure erecting a new cell tower, site and tower to serve an additional potential 150 subscribers is questionable and speaks to the numerical significance of the in-building coverage gaps. Now, do you disagree with that?
Yes.
Okay. Apart from the question need for the new cell tower, the Mckee's Associates' report of November 20th concluded that raising the antenna elevation to 190 feet and adjusting antenna operations at the McKeel's Corners site would improve the in-building coverage at 170 MHP along Route 301 west of Route 9. However, a gap would remain along Route 9 north of Route 301. Conversely, the proposed tower at 50 Vineyard Road provides reliable in-building service at 700 MHP along Route 9, but leaves a larger portion of 301 without reliable service. The applicants raised the potential of erecting an additional tower in the Nelsonville area to address the remaining reduced in-building coverage along Route 301. However, the Phillips Town Board has indicated that they do not have jurisdiction over the fate of the proposed Nelsonville Tower, and as such must consider issues associated with the application at hand. Consequently, the existing McKeel's Corners site with 190-foot tower is the better choice based on offered coverage. The applicant's RF engineer, Mr. A. Feehan, agrees with this conclusion as recorded in his November 30th, 2017 RF reports, which states, "Based solely on the area of coverage provided by the two options," Mr. Mckee's is correct in concluding that the existing site option is the better choice without Nelsonville. Now, you agree with that or not?
No, I disagree.
Did you disagree with your own consultant?
No, as I said before, you didn't read the whole statement.
I did read the whole statement. I'm reading word for word.
You read your consultant's whole statement.
Correct.
And if you take a look, and if you take a look at what your consultant left out, was the very next sentence in Mr. Feehan's report dated November 30th, which says, "However, given that the level of coverage provided is for reliable in-building coverage, it would require more, it would be more precise to count the number of buildings in the affected areas rather than compare the total area of coverage." And again, in your own sentences, specifically starts out, "Based solely, based on solely the area of coverage." And if you read all of the reports in full, including the Mr. Feehan report that we submitted on December 27th, it shows the area on Route 9 that will not be covered from McKeel's Corner is 3,200 linear feet along Route 9 that includes approximately 36 different buildings. The traffic count on Route 9 alone is above 15,000 people. In comparison, the small little area, while it might be large an area, it's small in distance. It's about 900 and some odd feet, and it only contains approximately five houses in that spot, and it will eventually be covered by something to the west on 301. So for all of those reasons, in both the original report that was being referenced there and the two supplemental reports we submitted in December, we show exactly why the McKeel's Corners site does not provide the necessary coverage the way 140 feet at 50 Vineyard Road would provide.
And RF engineer disagrees with you.
Well, I don't think he disagrees because he didn't, he didn't respond to the two latest reports, and also he cherry picked a sentence without providing, without providing a full, without providing the full quote.
I'm not going down the road to cherry picking.
There was a whole second sentence that he left out.
Believe me, you're doing okay with that end. Okay. So continue on.
In addition, I want to make some other points in response...
You're not even going to have so much time.
...in the report.
Okay. Not going to take up the whole night. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if...
You're not going to take up the whole night.
If we're unable to make our submission, we'll stand on the record as it stands.
No, I'll give you the time you need.
Okay. Thank you. So in the report that you just read, he talked about failing to provide the data. We did provide that data. He focuses only on the population in the gap area and not the population both at 2100 and 700. He also fails to include the nearly 20,000 travelers along major routes, including Route 9 and Route 301, and he doesn't include the gaps at 2100. We submitted a full response, both in terms of the December 20th and the December 27th PierCon reports. We also submitted a report regarding property values in response to the Campanelli memo. Number one, our MAI appraiser noted that there were reports cited that were not submitted and were not from this area. They're actually from New Jersey and quite old. There was a statement about FH, FHA does not permit loans within a fall zone of a tower, but in this case, the closest property line is 185 feet away. The broker opinions that were submitted were not based on any data or statistics. And also, Lane Appraisals went back out and prepared additional sales data on the north side of Sprout Brook Road to clarify the issue about whether there was a view or not a view and to make it perfectly clear, and the results remain the same. We included a visual resource assessment from Saratoga Associates dated December 21st. That went through the whole process. As you know, we had two different balloon tests. Mr. Gaynor was at those balloon tests. If you recall, the second balloon test, we picked locations in conjunction with the board, with Mr. Gaynor, and with the residents at each location. Those locations were not cherry picked. They were not best-case scenario. In fact, they were worst-case scenario. And that was documented by Mr. Allen in his December 21st report. Regarding potential icefall, we submitted a letter from JMC Engineers dated December 19th, and that went through all the different reasons why there's not an adverse effect from icefall here. There was a Dennis Rogers report included in the Campanelli memo dated March 28th. That was an old report from another location that included a photograph from a tower that was a lattice tower, which is not proposed here in Cordova, Alaska, which obviously this is not the same circumstances. And we submitted a tectonic engineering report that was originally prepared specifically in response to that. There were some recent questions regarding Verizon and whether it has leased with Homeland Towers and whether it will remove its facility from McKeel's once it's operational at 50 Vineyard, and the question of who Selco partnership was. There was also a question about the lease agreements. We've represented. The code doesn't require it. Nevertheless, we'll submit those lease agreements redacted with respect to the financial terms and clarification from Verizon Wireless.
Well, no, we're not accepting anything. We said December 29th was the end of it. Accepting, that's in the record, and we will not accept any. Some residents wanted to give some information.
Well, this is a public hearing.
Not giving it to you. We said December 29th, that would be the end. Am I correct? I'm going to ask my attorney.
No, so you're not accepting our materials even though this is an open public hearing?
I'm going to ask my attorney.
Well, we, the board asked for, I think this is something the board has to decide. The board asked and set a deadline for the submission of materials at the last meeting. To the extent you're now submitting, you know, new materials that the board hasn't seen, and it's up to the board...
Well, this is, this is in response to questions that were raised, materials that we personally received after that deadline. So we received materials from residents questioning the standing of the applicant to make the application and questioning whether there were actually agreements in place. And what I have and what I'm representing for the record is, number one, Homeland Towers has an agreement in place with the property owner. And number two, Homeland Towers has in place an agreement with Verizon Wireless. It's a signed agreement. We have copies to submit to the record. I'll also represent that Verizon is making the representation that upon the operation of its facility at 50 Vineyard Road, Verizon Wireless intends to remove its facilities at the McKeel's Corners site, and that Selco partnership is the general partner of New York S.M.S.A. Limited Partnership. And I'd be happy to submit that in writing. If you tell me I'm not permitted to submit it in writing, those are the representations on the record this evening.
Well, I, the board is at liberty to accept materials if it so chooses. With the above said, just eyeballing the materials, obviously, they're voluminous materials. I can't imagine that...
Those are 12 copies, or two lease agreements, and a two-page letter.
It's still material that will need to be looked at, and I would think in fairness, the board should be given some period of time in which to consider that before it renders a decision on this because you're providing it now.
We'll stand on our representations that I just made as an officer of the court. Finally, I'd like just to hit on a few other points. There was a memo submitted, I believe, by Mr. Eldridge, which claims I made a misleading statement to the board. He's incorrect. Any decision, and I've said this before, any decision by the board has to be based on substantial evidence contained in the written record. Whether the decision has the effect of prohibiting service is not limited to the administrative record. And I've put that in writing, and I'll stand by that statement as well. I have with me Mr. Vicente. He'd like to make a few statements. He's president of Homeland Towers. Thank you.
Now, wait. Are you finished? Have you had enough time to present your case?
Yes.
Okay. One question before you leave. Sit down, please. We've offered you alternative sites on this property. Have you talked to the landowners possible, making another, any other possible position on that property available?
We have discussed with the landlord, and he refuses to lease us any other spot on the property.
Okay. Thank you. And you're not going to use, and you're not going to use, we offered you the landfill in the town. You don't, that's no good for you either?
Well, we've documented, and two different consultants retained by the town have agreed that the landfill, and in fact, the fire district agrees, the landfill does not provide the necessary coverage.
Okay. And as far as McKeel Corners, that's no good for you either?
According to the radio frequency engineering, even at 210 feet, it does not remedy the gap in coverage.
Our says 190 feet is fine. So there's a...
Well, he doesn't say 190 feet is fine. He concedes the fact.
He does say it.
No, he does not say that.
Yes, he does.
He does not say that. Have you spoken to him off the record?
We'll go all day long. Yes, it's record.
You've spoken to him off the record?
No, I have it on here, 190 feet in writing.
Okay. Then you could rely on his written document.
So you, but you've had enough time.
I'll reserve my comments to respond to anyone from the public comments.
No, you finish your time now.
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm...
I want you to have all the time that you need.
I'm reserving my time. Mr. Chairman, can we go off the second? Can I speak to your counsel for a moment? Can we go off the record for a moment?
Why? Why go off the record? Why do you want to go off the record?
Okay.
You're asking to reserve time.
I'm reserving the opportunity to respond to comments from the public. That's perfectly reasonable.
Oh, that's all I understand. Fine. I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the board, members of the public. I wanted to make a few statements. I'll take as little time as I possibly can. I've been sitting through these meetings, sitting and listening to a lot of things and a lot of perceptions that may not be correct. So I just want to clarify a few items if I could. First, there's been a perception, it's stated by some people from the public, that, you know, we came to this site quickly, as if there was a race to get a site. Nothing could be further from the truth. We started working on this project over eight years ago. So we didn't come here overnight or quickly. We've given it a lot of thought. As a matter of fact, our first outreach to the town, to the town supervisor was in February... Thank you. Was in February of 2010, almost eight years ago exactly. So the notion that we came to this site quickly or we were trolling for a site, I don't think so. We've been very patient. And I will say that when we reached out to the town, we got no advice, no help, no recommendations. I'll also say that it's clear that not only Verizon has a need here, but that AT&amp;T and T-Mobile have a need, evidenced by their application that they filed in 2006 on a site on Old Route 9. In response to that application, the town asked them, can you evaluate the dump, the town dump? And at some point, the town refused to make that site available. I don't know what happened with that application, but it is evidence that there's a need here. We didn't invent the need. And as a person who has to pay all the bills, as a businessman, to think that we would go through this effort, take all this time, as difficult as you know, everyone in this room knows it is, if we didn't need to, is absolutely outrageous. Think about it. Who does that?
Business.
You're in business for profit.
Eight years. Eight years, sir. Eight years.
Let me just explain to you.
Eight years.
Are you in business for profit?
I'm a businessman. Every businessman is in business for profit.
Correct. Go ahead.
So not only is there a history of a commercial wireless need here, but there's also evidence of public safety need. The Phillips Town North Highlands Fire Department has stated that they could use our site and would like to co-locate on that site. They also mentioned that they had their consultants evaluate our site in comparison to their existing site at the town dump, that our site would perform much better. As a matter of fact, Chairman and this board acknowledged that fact in requesting, not, quite frankly, demanding that we allow them on the tower and help them out. We've had conversations. We would be happy to allow them on the tower. We'd be happy to help them any way we possibly can. So that's further evidence that there's not just a commercial need here. There's a public safety need right here in this town.
Okay. Just a public safety. Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Earlier on, we were told that Westchester County, I'm sorry, not Westchester, Putnam County Emergency Services was going to use this tower. Is that correct?
What we have been working with Putnam County to significantly improve their radio communication system. In that effort, we made this site available to the county. We made it available as we should, as any site we build in this county, we made it available to the county. That is, what the county's decision on that is their decision, but we made it available to them. I hope that answers your question.
Not using it.
To this, to this date, we have not heard from them whether they have an intent of using it or not.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Lastly, and this is really important, the town had a third party conduct a full analysis and report on how to improve public safety in Phillips Town back in 2011. This was a third-party report. It's over 100 pages, conducted by the town of Phillips Town. And they made several recommendations in that report, and I'd like to read to you one of their recommendations. This is on page 76 from that report dated April 25, 2011. Radio communications. During SWAT meetings and in general conversations in the community, we heard many negative comments about the county emergency radio system. At the emergency communication center, we learned the county currently has consultants reviewing the radio system in an effort to make it more reliable and to reduce the dead spots of coverage that the terrain in Phillips Town creates. We also are aware that there is a resistance in the community to building new radio towers that would improve radio communications in Phillips Town. Let me read that again. We also are aware that there is a resistance in the community to build new radio towers that would improve radio communications in Phillips Town.
What do you mean by that?
Let me continue. We currently.
Well, I asked you, wait, wait, wait. Wait, don't ask me a question. What do you mean by that?
What I mean by that, what I mean by that. Well, let me, let me tell you what I mean by that. As an applicant, we reached out to the town eight years ago. We asked for help. We got none. We then go to your code, and we look at your code. We take, we take your code seriously, and your code tells us to come to the exact property that we applied on. It actually invites us there, to the point where we need no variances to go on this property. Okay? So that's what I'm getting at. We did everything that we were supposed to, but the, what I've heard in this public, in these public hearings, in these meetings, is completely supportive of this statement from the 2011 report, that there is a fundamental resistance to this development of this infrastructure in this community. Let me just finish.
What was your question? If you owned a home, and you were sitting on your back porch, and somebody put a 140-foot tower in front, in your view, would you feel that you would have resistance to that?
I actually did develop a tower in my neighborhood. I see it from my backyard.
What I'm saying, but if you didn't make money on it.
There's over 200 homes in my community, and all of them still speak with me.
Yeah, but you didn't answer my question. I asked, no, you didn't. I asked my question, is if you had a house, and you had a 140-foot tower, and they were going to put it in front of you, and it was going to obstruct your view, let's say you had a beautiful view of the Hudson Valley, wouldn't you think you'd be a little concerned?
That all depends. I've done, I built a tower in my community, so I've demonstrated that I'm not a.
I think you just did.
I just, I think I just did. I built a tower in my community. Does that, and I see it from my backyard, better than you're going to see it from your house.
All right, okay, please, let's, let's get the man a chance to speak.
Thank you. So, let me, let me move on from that report because I think I, I made the point that I wanted to make. I want to also state that the town knew, reached out eight years ago, knew that we would eventually find a site that would rectify the problem. They actually, because I have an email that we're going to share with you right now, from Supervisor Shea to the media, that basically states that if they don't move forward with the site option, that will, that one will be coming to the neighborhood anyway, essentially. Is that, I can quote it? Here's the email from Mr. Shea to Kimberly Hyatt. "Well, we all said it, if we didn't do it at the landfill, then someone else would, and we would see no benefit in the form of revenue. The people spoke, and we listened, but in the end, the result will be the same." So I'll leave, I'll leave with this. I don't want to be contentious. Obviously, I've been here, I wanted to say a few things. This is the last thing I'm going to say. I've been doing this for 25 years. And I know what the difference is when, when people advocate their own personal interests versus what's best for a community. Now, in this current application, the closest neighbors have every right, every right, and I would expect them, to fight this application, to make their case, to advance their own personal interests. But the fact of the matter is that a community like this needs more infrastructure. It needs to address these problems, in particular for public safety. Okay, so there is a difference between advancing your own personal interests and making your personal interests that of the community. They're not one and the same. Right, there's a big difference there. And I ask everyone to consider that because when we evaluated the alternatives, we demonstrated that putting a site at the town dump, not only does it not work well, but we're putting it closer to more residences. A taller tower at McKeel's, same thing, we documented that, that would put it closer to more residences. So I once again remind you, as a board responsible for advancing the interests of a community, not individuals, that there is a difference. There is a difference. I also want to say something to the members of the public who.
No, no, don't, don't address the public.
No, I'll address the board, sorry. My mistake, my mistake.
We don't want to get into the shouting match here.
My mistake.
Okay, please, okay.
There have been, there have been comments made through this public process, making us look like bad people, me in particular. And I've had people ask me, well, how could you do this for a living? And I'll tell you something. I'm extremely proud of what I do. I tell my children how proud I am of what I do, and I'll tell you why. Because I know with every single tower I develop, every single tower I build, I save lives. I don't know how many or how often, but I know for a fact I save lives, and that's more important than anyone's view. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question. Wait, I'm not finished, sure. There's 64 acres here, okay, on this piece of property. Now, I know the owner, Mr. Fadden, only wants it to be on this one little, small piece. If he was open to moving this, let's say more down toward a commercial, or further away from the homes or something, you know, and then there's 64 acres, would you be agreeable to that? If you could find a spot that, you know, RF stuff and everything else like that.
Chairman, we've reached out to Mr.
I'm asking if you would be agreeable to it, as a person?
Yes, and we've reached out to him multiple times.
So you would be agreeable to that?
We've reached out to him multiple times, including last Friday when I spoke to him personally. He is not interested in any other location on the property.
Okay, so I understand everything you said, okay? Some I agree with, some I disagree with, but I understand it. But I also want you to understand, we're here, we're working for the town, we have to go by the law, we have to go by the zoning and lighting and stuff, but here's the thing, it's 64 acres. It would be so easy to move this tower, not, you know, in a different location, that would be more aesthetically pleasing, not only to the local residents, but to the town, but we have one person, one person, Fadden, who says no. So the whole town's supposed to say, okay? Do you understand the town's position?
Chairman, I understand, and nothing would make me happier than to, than if there were a site available to us that wouldn't be as contentious.
On the 64 acres?
Anywhere.
Well, I'm just, I'm just talking about this, I'm talking about one particular piece of property. There probably are locations there that you could use that would be more aesthetically pleasing both to the town and to the residents, and it would be a happy ending. But one guy says no.
Well, I think it's.
Wait, I'm, I'm finished, I'm talking to him. Are you, are you finished with your time? Are you finished with your time, sir? Are you finished with your time?
I am, Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Capone.
Thank you. I'm not going to rehash old grounds, I'm just going to address the issues that have been addressed by the applicant this evening. First and foremost, the issue of supplemental submissions, written submissions to this board. Now, I was here for the last meeting, and I thought there was an understanding, an agreement. When I enter an agreement, I live by that agreement. And I thought, and the record can prove me wrong if I am, but there was an agreement between this applicant's attorney and myself and this board. And that agreement was that written submissions for the record would be submitted no later than a minimum of 10 days before today. And Mr. Gordioso had the opportunity and did submit those. In fact, he made written submissions which did not afford me sufficient time to provide responses. Now, I could have come and provided responses to you today and said, hey, this is a public hearing, I have a right to submit things, but I didn't. And the reason is I entered an agreement, just as this applicant's attorney did, which was that any written submissions would be submitted no later than 10 days before today. Now, either he can honor that agreement, you can hold him to that agreement, or if not, if he wants to submit something else while holding your feet to the fire, because today's the last day for the shot clock, I respectfully submit if he wants time to submit things beyond, outside the scope of his agreement, he should be amenable to extending your shot clock, because it's unfair to sandbag this board by handing you new materials on the last evening of the shot clock when he demands that you make a decision. It's outrageous. It's disgusting. There's no grounds for it.
Well, we've had people come. Now, I had a gentleman, I had a gentleman come in tonight from Rockwell Association, and he had prepared a presentation.
And it was rejected. I saw that.
And I rejected it.
That's right.
And I told him, December 29th was the thing, and that was for all parties.
This board made it crystal clear. You want any written submissions? We're putting this on for the eighth. All written submissions will be supplied to this board at least 10 days before the date of that meeting. It's on the record. And Mr. Gordioso agreed to it, no objections. Now he wants to breach the agreement. It doesn't surprise me under the circumstances. Now.
Just to interject real quick, to the extent that, and you've heard the applicant in lieu of submitting written materials, says I'm representing to you and providing testimony about what the supplemental materials indicate. What, what's your response to that?
That's fine. It's a public hearing. He wants to make oral presentations, that's within his right. But he entered an agreement with this board, and he should be held to that agreement. Or at a minimum, if he's not going to honor his own agreement, he should agree to extend the shot clock, to afford this board an opportunity to review documents that they're seeing for the first time tonight while being demanded by the applicant to make a decision tonight. It's absurd. It's unfair, and it's unjust.
If I could ask, Mr. The applicant, would you be amenable to that?
No, we stand by our representations. Again, there was a question about what Verizon agreed to and whether there were agreements in place. I made representations to the record as both Verizon's counsel and Homeland Towers' counsel as a, as an officer of the court, and we'll stand by those representations.
So you would not, based upon what you indicate, you would not agree to extend the shot clock, based upon?
I don't see any reason to.
So you're refusing to do that?
I haven't been asked, and I don't see a reason to. If you told me what the reason was to extend the shot clock.
I'm asking, I'll ask you. I'll ask you, because somebody here from the residents approached me with a presentation, and they asked if they could, they could present, and I said, no, December 29th, we all agreed on December 29th. So I'll ask you, are you willing to, to let the public hearing continue for another month?
No, we would not have a decision.
No, refuse, okay, thank you.
Now, the, one of the principals apparently of Homeland got up and gave a speech and talked about the community and what people there are and how they think and all this other good stuff. Thank you, Mr. Vicente. Mr. Vicente made a speech before you. Let me make the record perfectly clear about some basic things. Number one, I represent a number of homeowners, your constituents. They are not against cell towers. Cell towers, as I said last time, are a necessary evil, no less necessary than sewage treatment plants. What they are opposed to is the irresponsible placement of cell towers. You don't put it in a more intrusive location where it'll inflict greater adverse impacts on your homeowner's properties than is necessary, as is the case here. Now, as far as the need for towers and saving lives, let me make this perfectly clear. Homeland Towers does not need this tower for anything except to make money. They don't provide personal wireless services. They're not claiming they have a gap in personal wireless service. What they're claiming is Verizon, their customer, has a gap in services. That's what you're claiming, despite the fact that you don't see a representative from Verizon here. No representative of Verizon has provided you a sworn statement of any type telling you any need. And quite frankly, common sense would dictate if the Verizon really needed a tower here, really had a problem with drop calls, they'd be applying for this tower and not Homeland. However, Verizon does do business with other companies. By way of example, Crown Castle. Verizon is one of Crown Castle's customers. Crown Castle also doesn't provide personal wireless services. They, just like Homeland, build infrastructure, like the tower at McKeel's, and they lease space to Verizon. And there's no reason why Crown Castle can't extend the height of his, height of its tower and lease space to Verizon. That's exactly what it does for money. You won't hear Mr. Gordioso say that because he can't. He has a conflict of interest between his two clients.
Please, please, you, I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you a chance to talk. I said I'd give you a chance to talk. After he's done it, I'll let you talk.
The owner of McKeel's property is sitting in the audience tonight, and she has absolutely no reservations about allowing a 190 or even a 200-foot tower being built on her property. She's perfectly fine with that. Ironically, somewhere out of magic, she got a letter from Crown Castle, Mr. Gordioso's client, and Mr. Gordioso, it's a matter of public record.
Yeah, I do not represent Crown Castle.
I told you, you can talk after he's finished. I don't want you to keep interrupting, it's going to be an all-night long. I'm going to give you a chance, believe me. I, I'm fair to you. Go ahead.
For some unknown, unknown reason, Crown Castle sent a letter to the owner of the property saying, oh, we don't want a taller tower there. Please.
You're not going to have to come up and speak at the microphone, I'm sorry.
I'm the leaseholder at McKeel's. I will not benefit financially one nickel more if they put a tower that's taller on the site as it is now subject to a perpetual lease. I had nobody to leave it to, so I'm single, so they gave me a contract that they pay me for 20 years.
You leave it to me?
What, they gave it to me?
Go ahead.
All right, so they called to ask because you've been persistent about wanting to have it at another site. Now, I remember all of the site studies from 1998. There was no signal at the dump. There was no signal at the very location that they picked on my lot, the first balloon test. They had to go to another location on the same lot. You know.
Okay, are you, let me finish. Are you against your tower being increased, raised?
I have no say in it.
Are you against it? You have no say in it?
I have no say in it. Crown Castle has leased it, they can do anything they want within 3,000 square feet for, and went long after I'm dead.
Well, that's a long time from now. Thank you very much.
They can do anything.
Okay, thank you.
If Crown Castle wanted to make it 210 feet tall, would you have a problem with that?
I don't, I would have a problem personally, but I couldn't do anything about it because I've already signed away my rights.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Continue, Mr. Capone.
The bottom line is there is no reason why Verizon, who allegedly has the gap, not Homeland, there's no reason why Verizon can't go to the company that it does business with, let them extend the height of the tower and put it there. But Verizon's not here. Verizon is not applying for this, Homeland Towers is. Now, you've heard discussions of, well, let me get to the brokers. Mr. Gordioso said the brokers' letters submitted on behalf of the residents don't, are not based on data. I asked the court to review the memorandum of law, the memorandum of opposition I've submitted, and the OmniPoint decision where a federal court said that letters from real estate brokers should be considered as substantial evidence. And the reason is, the brokers who drafted those letters, talking about the adverse impacts on the real estate property values, they are not merely licensed professionals who know about real estate markets. They are licensed real estate brokers who know about this specific real estate market and these properties, and that is compelling evidence of the adverse impact on the real estate which this proposed structure will have. And the OmniPoint case tells you that is evidence that you should consider. Now, with regard to the 2% gap, I was here when your engineer said, oh yeah, well, the, the companies, they want, they want 98% success rate. They'd consider 2% a failure. If there's a 2% of drop calls, that's a failure. Well, the law is, that does not constitute a significant gap. Well, the law is, that does not constitute a significant gap. Just because Verizon or another company wants it, their failure to obtain it doesn't mean they have a significant gap in coverage. That's not what the law says. What the law says is, the Telecommunications Act of 1996 does not guarantee that carriers such as Verizon have seamless or perfect coverage. If they want to invoke the Telecommunications Act, they have to show they have a significant gap in personal wireless coverage, and nothing that's been submitted shows that. As far as the submission that came in within the past 10 days from Mr. Gaudioso, I understand that they talk about the 2,100 megahertz range. If you look at your own engineer's testimony, he basically said that's a farce. The reason is, everybody knows, every RF engineer knows, you're not gonna get coverage at the 2,100 megahertz range. It's a farce. It's a joke. It has to be ignored. Substantial evidence. Mr. Gaudioso told you, you have to make a decision based upon substantial evidence. What does it mean? This is what it means as a matter of law. It means a court must recognize, if they proceed and if the board makes a decision they don't like and they try to challenge it, a federal judge is gonna look at the evidence you have and say, "Was there more than a scintilla of evidence in the record to support the conclusion rendered by the board? Was there sufficient evidence to support a reasonable mind coming to the conclusion the board did?" If there is, then the decision is based on substantial evidence. So any decision you make should be, be based upon the evidence before you, and you should cite the evidence when you make your decision. I'm telling this not to tell you how to do your job, but to increase the likelihood that your decision would be immune from challenge and hopefully not be challenged at all. I really don't think I need anything else. So are there any questions?
No. I guess you talked about the, the site like that. The board and this town itself is not against cell towers. I mean, I disagree with the gentleman. They're not against cell towers. We're just looking for cell towers to be in a decent location. Okay? And there is a decent location on this 64 acres other than the one little piece of property. They couldn't have put this any further closer to the residential area if they tried. If they could move it anywhere else, but they're not against it. They said they would do it. It's just one person again, the owner, who says, "No," that he can't do it. I'm sure this gentleman would move that tower to a better location, but one owner, one guy is holding up this whole town. Thank you.
One of the things that amuses me, and I've, again, I've handled these cases across the entire United States. When I see an applicant, not necessarily this one, but an applicant goes up before a board and says, "This is the only place we can put it. You know, we, we sent a letter to Smith's over there because he's got a place out in the woods, but he didn't respond to us." They don't tell them that he offered to pay him $100 a month for the tower. There's a saying, every man has his price. The owner of this parcel, they, they say he won't put it anywhere else. Really? What did they offer him? Do you think if they offered him $10,000 a month, he might let them move it? Now, I'm not saying that they have to do that. All I'm saying is, they have to establish to this board that this is the only location and the only spot at that location. Did they use, did they prove to you that they made sufficient reasonable efforts to try to persuade the owner to put the, the proposed structure in a less intrusive alternative location? What's his price? I don't know what they offer him. They're not gonna let you know that. They said they're gonna submit, submit the leases, but they're going to cross out, they're gonna, they're gonna black out the data of how much they're paying him. Well, what's to say they're only paying him $500 a month? For $500 a month, I wouldn't want it near my house either. You can put on my property, put on the farthest corner. What do they offer them? $2,500 a month or $3,000? Have they showed you they've tried their best efforts to persuade that owner to put this structure in the least intrusive location? And the answer is, no, they haven't. They won't address that. Why? Because this whole application is about money. They want to put up a tower as cheaply as possible. So they're not gonna offer him $5,000 a month. Even if they make $15,000 a month in rent, they're not going to do it. And again, this is only about money. Homeland Towers does not provide personal wireless services. Ask them. Ask them in attempting to persuade the owner to put this proposed structure in a location which be, which have, would have less adverse impacts on the neighbors. Ask them how hard they tried. What do they offer as incentives? They're not gonna tell you. Thank you.
Mr. Gaudioso.
Just a very, very few responses. Since May 23rd, when we filed the application, Verizon Wireless has been an applicant. They continue to be an applicant. They are an applicant, as a co-applicant of this application. Mr. Graef, your prior RF consultant, he testified on the record that Verizon Wireless did have a significant gap in service. Substantial evidence on the record does have to be based on a code criteria, and that's a very important nuance. And it's not one guy holding up, holding up the relocation. Again, one man happens to own 64 acres, but that's the zone, that's the permitted zone. That's the zone that allows the towers up to 195 feet, whereas the other zones, it's 110-foot height limitation. This is the OC, the, the office commercial zone that is the permitted zone under the town code. That's how we came to this property. If there was another property owner that had a similarly situated zone that would've made their property available, we would've looked at that. But it was the town's decision to make the OC zone, the zone with the applicable height limit, to make it with the applicable setback requirements and the lesser standards by being in the correct zone. It was the town that had created the zoning map, and it was the town that created this particular location. Nevertheless, we still looked at alternatives that were not in the OC zone, such as the Lane Gate landfill, and it, and it wasn't a matter that we didn't want to go there. It was a matter that it didn't work from a technical standpoint. It's the same thing, this, this concept that either Ms. Myers or Crown could raise the tower. It's not a matter of whether they could raise the tower. It's a matter of that it's not code compliant, number one, and more importantly, number two, it doesn't remedy the significant gap in service, particularly along that 3,200 linear foot area on the heavily traveled 15,000 travelers along Route 9 to the north. That's the key. The key is that it doesn't work from a technical standpoint. Verizon Wireless wants to provide service. They don't care which site they're at, as long as they can remedy their gaps. And that's our response. Thank you.
Let me ask you one question. The town is not against cell towers. I don't believe they are, because everybody uses cell phones, everybody uses internet, everybody needs, needs service. Okay? If I ask you to delay this to, to next month, and you approach the owner to ask him that you could move this to a, a site on that 64 acres, which would be more aesthetic to the town and make the residents a little more happy to not looking at the tower in their way, would you do that?
No, and I'll have Mr. Vicente speak to, speak to the fact. I'll have Mr. Vicente testify on the fact of this conversation.
No, no. I'm asking you.
No, because we've tried that. We've done that already. Number one, we don't believe that relocating it would be any less visual to the community than what we've shown at 140 feet.
On 64 acres.
Number two, on 64 acres, correct. Number two, and more importantly, the property owner has refused, had nothing to do with money. Money is not the issue to this property owner. Money is not the issue to this.
So it is one man.
I'm sorry?
So it is one man.
No, on this particular piece of property. If there was another piece of property that was in the OC zone that someone else controlled, then we would be willing to go there.
Thank you.
If it worked from a technical standpoint. Mr. Vicente will testify about what the landlord indicated to him, and it had nothing to do with money.
Mr. Vicente, you sound like a reasonable man. Okay?
Some people say.
No, you do. You sound like a reasonable man. I understand what you're trying to do. You're a businessman, you're trying to make a living, you're trying to do the right thing. And so is the board, and so is the town. And I just find it obscene that you can't go back and speak to this gentleman and say, "Listen, we could settle this whole thing if you just, if we could just let us move this a little bit over here, a little over there, so it most aesthetically pleases the town and the residents." And if that could be done, that would be the end. Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be better answer?
Chairman, that would be wonderful. And not only, not only did we try to convince Mr. Fadden to do that even before we brought the application, we, on several occasions, have tried to get him to open up other areas of the property for our use. As recently as last Friday, I spoke with him, and I made my case, I made every, I made every issue that I could come up with to try and convince him to give us another spot on the property.
Is that, is that the one?
And his concern, his concern has stated to me very clearly, I've given this a lot of thought, you've asked me, you know, countless times, I have future plans on the property, and the only location that I will entertain and that I will lease to you is the current location. And we have tried on several occasions, and I want to make sure the board understands that. I am, I am a reasonable person, and I, I would love to be able to further mitigate the impacts that we've already mitigated to some extent, I think successfully, but I would love to further mitigate it, but I don't have that option.
Okay.
If I can just follow up, did you propose paying him more money for alternate sites?
We proposed more money. We proposed different compensation schemes, and that wasn't the issue. The issue was his future plans on the property and that this was the only location that he felt, and he feels strongly about it, that wouldn't interfere with his future use or plans.
Are you willing to be more specific with respect to the financial negotiations that you had with the owner?
You know, I, I, I would love to, but we have to respect, this is a contract between two individuals. We have to respect privity of contract. I'm not at liberty to, to make financial arrangements public. I don't think that's appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Last minute, last week once was three hours. We're not gonna go three hours, because we have a lot to do. But I just want to tell you, what was presented, besides Mr. Gaudioso, information was a detailed report for, or a report, I would say, a support of, against the cell tower from the Rockland Towers, Rockledge Road Association. And, and there's a few pictures of houses where it shows you the balloon test they took that the houses are visible. It's 100 rock walls and 43 rock walls. I don't want to go over this whole thing, but I want to give the gentleman who prepared this, he wants Mr. Eldridge a few minutes to speak, if you want to.
I'd like to. Mr. Cooper, please.
Mr. Cooper? Okay. Like I say, I, this is a real detailed report, and, you know, I just, I don't want to go the whole thing, but I, you know, we let them talk, and I feel that I should give the residents a chance to talk.
I didn't bring a copy of that with me. Could I?
All right. Well, don't read the whole thing. Please.
I'm not gonna read it. I just would like to.
Oh, here.
But it was an excellent report.
December, you want, from December 11th or?
No, this is the, December 28th. I just, you just put it in with the package. You put it in by the 29th.
Yes.
Yeah. You made that date. Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, here, here. I have it.
If I may, I wanted to address a couple of the things that Mr. Vicente and Mr. Gaudioso had stated. I think I mentioned at a previous meeting that I called neighbor to neighbor to Mr. Fadden prior to this getting to this extent. And I didn't really know him. I had only met him actually at a couple of wakes, unfortunately. Mutual friends had passed. And I subsequently, not knowing about the cell tower, I called him, despite my neighbor saying, "He's not gonna talk to you." I said, "Well, I feel since I am abutting his property as a neighbor to another neighbor, I would ask him." So I called him. I was told he wouldn't answer the phone or he wouldn't take my call. Carolyn Fadden answered. I heard the phone muffled as she asked him, "There's a guy by the name of Paul Eldridge on the phone. Do you want to talk to him?" He says, "Yeah, I know Paul. I'll talk to him." And he talks to me. And what he said was, "You folks located the tower. He had nothing to do with its location." And what he said to me was, "I just told him, 'Don't put it in a spot where I can see it.'" Now, the 64 acres is exclusive of 27 acres he has on the top of the mountain with a mansion that is being, it's on the market for 8.8 million. He's got 91 acres altogether. Yet this particular parcel, this tower, will be between 185 or 200 feet from my property line. It's patently, grossly unfair. I will see it even at 140. I will see it every day from almost every room in my house. We look out to the valley, and there it is, dead center from our view of our back deck. I realize I'm only one person, but that is something, after you've lived in a place, you owned it, we've owned it for 37 years, we've lived there in a house on that property for 35. There's something wrong when somebody can dictate this situation, and we have no recourse.
Thank you. Well, like I say, the board has, has tried to get, you know, ask them to move it or, you know, put it in another location, 64 acres. And I honestly feel, I think, in listening to this gentleman, I believe him. I believe him that he tried to do that.
I do, too.
With his owner.
I do, too.
Okay? So I don't fault him for that.
I don't either.
I honestly, I honestly believe that.
It's really an unfortunate set of circumstances.
It's a shame that one person, one person could, could, could do all this, but that's what we're dealing with.
But I'd like to correct.
If I can just follow up.
Sure.
Is, when you spoke to, is it your position that Fadden would not entertain another location on the property?
No. He said to me, "Paul, I had nothing to do with it. They picked the location." I've got one of these situations. They said this, he said that. I don't know what's true.
Did he tell you he would entertain alternate locations on the property?
We didn't get into that depth of conversation. What he said was, "It sounded like he would," because he said to me, "I didn't pick it. They picked it." They say, "He picked it." I don't know who picked it.
We were in a book club together.
I'm sorry? You have to, you have to say your name so that the lady on the TV can get you in.
Joel Cooper. Just anecdotally, we were in the book club. My wife and I were in the book club with them.
And you were? I'm sorry.
Joel Cooper.
Okay.
What club is who?
The Faddens and other people. And so we knew them for years, and so it was a surprise, and we felt, it was really an insult. So we said, "We're not joining the book club." I mean, "We're suspending our participation in the book club."
That'll fix them.
Well, he was actually, I got an email, and that's something, he was upset about that and said he's, he's sorry we take it so personally. But in the end, it more or less echoed the comment that this was coming, Homeland Towers picks it, and I had nothing to do with the location, and then he ended with, "You'll, anyhow, you'll get used to it. Don't worry, you'll get used to it."
Excuse me, I just want to interject that he did submit a letter to the, to the board or, or that said that this was the only location that he would entertain on his property. So, so he's contradicting what he said to both of you.
I believe that was submitted after, way down, after my conversation with him. I had a conversation with him in the summertime.
All right. Thank you very much. No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
If I may, too.
We're not doing the whole thing now. We're not doing the whole report. You know, boil it down.
Before we get to that, I would like to address one other thing that was mentioned. When Mr. Gaudioso submitted the May 23, 17 letter, cover letter for the application.
Address the board, please.
Application. He stated in it that the, in about the third paragraph, that Putnam County was gonna use this for emergency services communications. That was not true.[1552.71] In speaking, there is a letter on the record from Mr. Lannan.
Wait, wait, wait. We're not going back and forth. You'll get a chance to speak. Go ahead.
It's a letter on the record from Mr. Lannan that indicated that they, Homeland Towers was told on numerous occasions that the county would not use that facility at 50 Vineyard. They cite even, I think it was Pinnacle, in their report said what the tower, or excuse me, what the antenna was. They gave a Sinclair model something. They told me, and they gave a letter that's on the record, that they had stated they did not need it, and that Motorola had also communicated with you that it was not necessary, that the county would not use it for that purpose. Two things for the record. There's been an issue and a concern that I've had relative to the 140 feet. And I believed that when you said that you agreed with 140 feet, that that's what it was potentially going to be, not 180 feet. Then we see, two and a half weeks after you make that commitment, and I have, and I'm not boring you with the details of each, each back and forth, but twice you said that that was correct. You're going to revise it to 140. Two and a half weeks later, what gets submitted, because you asked that the application form be revised. He revises it by saying, "We want 180-foot monopole tower." And in the alternative, conditioned on approval, we'll go to 140 and may paint it brown. I thought, as everybody else in this room thought, that when he said and agreed, "Yes, that's correct. We're agreeing to 140, and they were going to revise the application," that it was unconditioned, that that's, his words meant what he said they, they were, that that's what you were going to do. Instead, we get legalese on the actual form that says it's 180-foot monopole tower, pole tower, and in the alternative, conditioned upon approval, it would be 140 and may be painted brown. That tells me that I'm not sure who or what I'm dealing with. That lacks honesty as far as I'm concerned. It's patently unfair. Statements, numerous statements were made on the record that if Vineyard Road was put up, that, and the state, the words that were used were that McKeel's Corner would be removed, it would be taken down, replaced. However, we only found out at the last public hearing that it was only Verizon's antennas that were going to be moved. And there was, again, back and forth with the board. And Mr. Sestone, I think, said, "Well, what you're saying then is that we're going to still have the two towers?" Yes. So this is not replacing. They're not removing McKeel's. You're taking the Verizon equipment off of that tower at McKeel's and putting it over here, which, by the way, that tower is owned by another company, CCI, Crown Communications. That doesn't make sense. You say one thing, but you really meant, or were hiding what you really meant, which was, "We're not taking the tower down. And now I understand, you know, you can't take the tower down because you don't own it." But the statements were pretty clear that it was going to be removed, taken down, replaced. Common language tells me that's what you meant. There's another tower on Route, just off of Route 9 on Tower Road. This is.
Across from ESP, some, or?
It's across from ESP, near what was Minardi's. I knew Chris Minardi. It's called, at the time when it was approved, Schubert's Property Monopole Site. That is 2.7 miles from the Vineyard Road location. It's 2.2 miles from the McKeel's Corner location. When that application was submitted back in the late 90s, Mr. Gaudioso was part of the team that presented that with Snyder &amp; Snyder and Ms. Snyder. You were actually an assistant to her at the time. Now, this is 20 years ago. Okay? The indication was, at that time, including maps, and I would ask that you, because they are town records. It's not something I'm submitting tonight. They are part of your town records. All the records related to that, construction of that tower, and the maps that were shown for the coverage, and it's interesting, this 3,200 linear foot, which is the major issue problem as far as significant gap stated by Piercon, their maps from that presentation back years ago said that the placement of the tower at Schubert's would cover exactly the area that they claim is now a gap. This, it's hard to see, but this is Phillips Town over here. That's the rest of Putnam County. 553 is the proposed site and coverage. It covers not only almost down to 301, it covers paths into Fishkill. At that time, that was what was expressed. Here's another map. So I would respectfully ask that the complete documents from the submissions made 20 years ago and subsequent until it was built be included in the record. They are town records. And I can tell you exactly where it is. It's on tax map 16.20-1-9. Where this 3,200 linear feet, what, what's in that area? Well, Piercon says it's 36 buildings. Priscilla and I, on Sunday, went along that 3,200 feet, and we have found 36 buildings. Of the 36, there's 13 business-oriented buildings that currently house 15 businesses. These businesses are: a fruit and vegetable market and coffee shop, one manufacturing warehouse, one construction contractor warehouse, one car repair shop, used car and auto body business, two truck repair shops, one motorcycle customizing shop, one tree removal company, one firewood supply company, a blueprint shop, a personal trainer location, one land surveyor who happens to be here tonight, one wall systems company office that's only open two days a week, a used car lot, and an empty antique store. I dare to say, these are not high-traffic businesses. They're not Walmart. They're not highly visited by a lot of customers. There's 13 houses along that stretch, so now we're up to 26, and 10 studio cabins. And anybody that lives in Phillips Town knows what I'm talking about, the studio cabins that are kind of behind Vera's and south of Vera's Fruit and Vegetable Market. They're called studios because I don't know how you, how many people you could possibly squeeze in any of those. But many of them are unoccupied, and several of them don't have siding on them. Those 13 business buildings, 13 houses, 26, and 10 studio cabins is the significant gap area that they have. Verizon has a 37 or a 36, somewhere in that range, market penetration, we've been told. In those 36 buildings, we're talking about an estimated 13 Verizon customers. To address the claim significant gap for this small group, Homeland Towers is going to construct, and I don't know at this point if it's 140 or 180, eight-foot tower. If they build this tower, there will be three towers within 2.7 miles from Vineyard Road to Tower Road, which is the Schubert's. The Town Code, Section 175-46, Section C, entitled "Colocation Use of Tall Structures or Communication Towers" reads, "At all times," this is the Town Code, says, "At all times, shared use of tall structures and existing or approved communication towers in accordance with subsection B2 shall be preferred to the construction of new communication towers." I dare say the record shows that the supposed gap, I can't imagine it's considered significant, was covered by the tower that was put up at Schubert's. McKeel's, if it's raised, is going to cover the rest. And I believe there is no significant gap, and this application should be denied.
Thank you very much.
Well, it's hard, tough to follow that act, but the only thing I would add, which seems to be overlooked in all of these discussions when we talk about gap in service or necessity, is we're only talking about a gap in high-speed data service. As far as I can read the law, and I used to be a lawyer, the law is, from Willett, which is a 1999 decision, is the test of gap in coverage is voice coverage. Can you make a call from your cellphone, handheld, excuse me, handheld cellphone to a tower? All these propagation maps, everything submitted so far talks about two frequencies, 700 and 2100. And Mr. Campanelli mentioned, 2100 is a frequency designed for overcapacity. There's never been a whisper that there's not enough capacity. So I just think, focus on that, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
What?
She needs her paper back.
Oh. I had some other stuff.
That's okay. That's enough. I just before, I just want to say something, then you can, then you can give you a chat. I also got new information before the 29th was a number of affidavits, sworn, notarized affidavits from residents in the area. The area is Rock, several from Rock Wall Roads, several from Lane Gate Road, several from Round Hill Road, several from, one from Route 9, like that. What I did was on a map, I took it, I made dots on a map, and it was funny because I made a complete circle around where you're going to put the tower. I just thought that was interesting. But go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Regarding the affidavits, I'll note that at least one of them was notarized but not signed. I'm not sure how the notary notarized something that was signed, was not signed. I also note that they're in the location generally where the coverage is from McKeel's. I mean, that's the point. And from day one, we've never said McKeel's Tower is coming down. You can go back and check, check the videos.
Okay.
Go back and check the videos.
I'm glad you said that.
Every single time, it was Verizon Wireless's facility. It was never represented to this board once that the McKeel's Tower would be taken down. Never once.
Can I speak?
Sure.
Thank you. I thought the same thing. When, I'll be honest with you, okay? I thought for the whole time that McKeel's Corner was to be taken down. I thought that, I did. And then last month, you said that it wasn't taken down, just Verizon was going to come on. So I thought I'm losing my mind. I said, "I must be losing, I must be getting old, I'm getting crazy," right? So I went back and I looked at the minutes. I said, "Well, how could I possibly think this?" And I found on page 17, in September 11's minutes, I'll read it to you, word for word so there's no mistake. We're speaking about, I was asking a question about, "Do we need this tower or not?" And I said, "Chairman Robert D., and you said something about that the RF people would explain that it would be needed, your people." So I said, "Okay, I'm going to, like you say, ask RF engineers to address that. But I have a question here, there. You have, like, several pages of where towers and so on and so forth. And then you have McKeel's Corners, okay. Then you have with McKeel's Corners and without McKeel's Corners. And I also saw some note that you were going to maybe abandon McKeel's Corner and replace it with this. Robert Gaudioso, we would replace McKeel's Corners with this site, correct. Chairman Robert D., so why would you just leave McKeel's Corners and then we wouldn't need this? Robert Gaudioso, because McKeel's Corners does not provide the full coverage to the area, whereas this would, and this would be duplicate of McKeel's Corners. So that's why we would eliminate McKeel's Corners. Chairman Robert D., all right, so we have a cell tower you're eliminating to put this one in. Robert Gaudioso, correct. I'm not losing my mind. Any reasonable being would understand that you meant that.
Yeah, I think even, I think from day one, the representation was the Verizon facility. It was never about the McKeel cell tower. And there's been.
This is the word for word.
Use of words, well, you know, I'd have to go back and look at the.
Well, I got it here.
I don't know if that's a stenographic record or not. I don't believe that's a stenographic record.
You don't think it's a stenographic?
No, I don't believe so. But in any event.
No, our minutes are not correct.
I didn't say that. I didn't say whether it was a stenograph, I said, "I don't know if it's a stenographic record or not."
Want to explain what stenographic record means? I don't really know.
Yeah, when a stenographer actually takes it word for word.
Now you want a stenographer to read it.
And certify it. I don't know whether you said the word "tower" or not, and in any event, the bottom line is.
You call me a liar.
No, I'm not saying you're a liar. I'm saying I don't recall the exact discussion going that way, but I can tell you from day one, we never made a representation that the tower was coming down. And in any event, you understand that to be the case now. It's been Verizon's application and Verizon's facility and Verizon's site. And that's all we've represented all along. It's the same thing with, with the thing about that we were going to put the county on the tower. Let me read it to you. It was from May 23rd, and we've never said anything different. "The facility will be designed to support colocation, including the emergency service antennas and equipment for Putnam County. That's required by your code that we design it for colocation. We never provided a document from Putnam County to say they were going to go on the tower. We never showed them on the site plan. The only place we showed them was in the RF report on exposure so that no one could say that the facility would be dangerous if we ended up adding the county. So we included a worst-case scenario. And if I recall correctly, you had actually asked us to include all the carriers on the visuals and on different materials throughout the process, and we did that. So never once did we ever say that the county was definitely coming on this tower. We never made that representation. We never made the representation the tower was coming down. And I apologize if that was not correctly understood, but we never made a representation otherwise."
I think there's a difference between correctly understood and what you said. That's my opinion. And you're entitled to, I'm entitled to mine, you're entitled to yours. Go ahead.
Regarding Schubert, I mean, obviously, it was 20 years ago, different technology, different types of systems at that time. Regarding the significant gap, the gap, the gap is not limited that this facility is going to cover to that 3,200 linear area on Route 9. That's the difference if the tower at McKeel's, which is speculation at this point, there's no application to raise McKeel's, was raised to a height that was almost double the height limit of the code, would need at least three, two setback variances and a street frontage variance, would be closer to more residences, and quite frankly, from the visuals we submitted, would be more visible above the tree line, particularly from the residents that are, that are here tonight with respect to this application. So the gap is not just limited to that 3,200 linear foot location on Route 9. That's just the difference between 140 at Vineyard Road in the permitted OC zone, height limit of 195 feet compared to McKeel's with the height limit of 110 feet, and McKeel's up to 190. And again, McKeel's is not an existing tall structure at 190 feet. It's an existing tall structure at 110 feet under your code. And then finally, just would have, like to have Mr. Xavier testify that he did receive written confirmation today from the property owner that he would not allow any other property on, any other location on the 64-acre property.
We had that already. We had the letter from before, you know, so.
You didn't accept the letter, but I just wanted to get the testimony on the record from Mr. Xavier that as of today.
Wait a minute, sit down, please. I'll determine who goes next. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'd like permission to have Mr. Xavier testify that today he received correspondence from Mr. Fadden that he would not allow any other location on the 64-acre property.
I will do that. Now, have you anything else? Are you finished? I mean, do you have, have you had enough time?
No. In response to those last comments, I do, I have, Chairman, thank you.
You have enough time?
In response to those last comments, correct.
Okay, you don't need any more time?
Correct.
Thank you. Yes, sir, you've been waiting there a while.
I'm just.
I'm sorry?
I'm fine.
You're fine? Okay, Mr. Xavier.
Board, members of the public here, my name is Vincent Xavier, I'm the regional manager for Homeland Towers. And just to be concise, as a follow-up to Mr. Vicente's assertions regarding his calls on Friday in discussion, we did offer him the weekend to mull it over and provided him documentation to look at. And then today, I did speak to him again and obtained another letter from him evidencing his determination that there, not only is that location that was proposed by Ron Grainer, but any other place on the property is still not going to be allowed by him. So we had a secondary letter signed, which obviously you won't accept today, but I'll just testify that I did receive that letter, and I would be prepared to submit it.
Okay. With that, you're talking about, I know Friday, I got a call, I mean, I got a call from Mr. Grainer, I think, believe, on Wednesday. I think he looks, he found another location or something, and he emailed it to you. Is that what you're talking about?
That's correct, yes.
Oh, so he's looking on the case. And Mr. Fadden refused that location?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anybody else there? Mr., one last person. Yes, sir, come on up. Unless Mr. Gaudioso has anything else? No? Okay. And this will be it.
I'm very sorry to be designated as the last person because there's a lot of people that have to talk. First off, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your, your, your character and your strength to deal with all this for so long, and both boards combined together, it's been a lot to deal with. It's really, really impressive. And your strength of conviction is really fantastic for us. I think also, everybody's got to recognize, tonight's a little lighter night than, than a lot of the crowds have been showing up for here, and even the Nelsonville ones, it probably has a lot to do with the weather. I just want to make three simple points, and please correct me if I'm wrong. My recollection is that months ago, when you were reviewing the application, you pointed out to Mr. Gaudioso in his application, I believe, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, or we can look it up, that he made a statement that there were 500 cars or something that passed by Route 9. And you, in good faith, helped him with his application and said, "Well, that can't possibly be true." Tonight, I don't know if you picked it up, but now they're saying 15,000, right? And I think we have established a long track record of these gentlemen talking out of both sides of their mouth and misrepresenting things and actually relying on you all to catch things and correct them, which you've done in good faith. You are standing up for a community that is trying to explain to these people, Mr. Vicente, notwithstanding, saying, "I need this to happen," who are saying, "We're fighting for our community, the beauty of our community, the unusual place we are and the value that we have." Two last things I'd like to say is, if there were any chance that you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vicente, maybe Mr. Gaudioso, maybe Mr. Eldridge, Mr. Cooper, could actually meet with Chris Fadden and say, "Chris, do you want this to be the legacy of your reputation here in this town? He's, he is, he is somebody who seems very dispassionate about all this, but I'm convinced, listening to all of you, if you all sat down with him, give him a half an hour and say, 'Chris, this would be better for the community. Here's what we'd like to do,'" and he'd really find out what these good people would like to try to do. Lastly, I would like to say that it's very difficult. You are all between a rock and a hard place because Mr. Gaudioso has affirmed numerous times that they're going to go to court over this. And you're sitting here saying, "What's the best use of our community's proceeds and money? And where can we take a fight?" I'm convinced these guys have talked out of both sides of their mouths so much, and as much as Mr. Gaudioso has taken a few of us up on misrepresenting things, he is very slipshod, and they've become very slipshod on the facts on a number of occasions, and you all, in good faith, have corrected them in, in trying to just be even-handed about it. I would like to encourage you to stand your ground. Let's take this legal as far as it has to go. Let's take this legal as far as it has to go. You're all standing up for the community. There's a lot of people that have been raising money to get attorneys, other RF engineers, and really take a stance against these people. And let's go for it. It's not gonna be cheap, it's not gonna be easy, but you've seen months and months and months of hundreds of people now in the community showing up. It's something we all feel so strongly about, and I would encourage you all to say, you know what? We don't have to cower to this. We don't. There's a lot of people that are gonna have your back. We're ready to raise some money if that's what it takes outside of the community funds. We don't want you to be exposed to anything. But clearly, this is something that we all want to fight for, and we all believe in substantiating the beauty of where we all live and fighting for it. Thank you all very much.
Well, as far as sitting down and speaking to Mr. Fadden, I'd be, I'd love to do it, but unfortunately, that's impossible because we do have a shot clock and you're not gonna
Mr. Gaudioso would agree to extend the shot clock to facilitate that communication?
Yes. Come on, Bob.
No. Yeah, I I think unfortunately, we did, we did use our best efforts to convince him. I don't believe that a discussion between members of the board and a particular property owner would, in an ex parte type setting, would be appropriate anyway. So I don't, I don't believe that that would be the right forum for any type of discussion. I think it would, quite frankly, put the board at risk because I don't believe the board should be having that type of discussion with a particular property owner. So I don't, I don't see the opportunity there, and as I said before
If I could just forget about ex parte communications, including the applicant. In other words, representative from the board, you, I mean, no one is doing it in secret. It would be a joint communication. I mean, it's just a proposal to extend the shot clock to, if it's no, it's no, but it's, it seems that there are obviously unsettled issues.
Could I just, Mr. Chairman, could I just take a two-minute adjournment to speak to my client? Would that be possible? Okay, thank you.
No problem. Huh? We're gonna take a break after this. After the vote, we'll take a break.
I don't want to
Huh? You know, I, I know, I'm just trying to
The only reason why I'm suggesting it or just taking him up is it would fortify
Yeah, I understand.
Our record.
I understand exactly what you're saying.
In other words, if he said, listen, and I believe what the applicant's attorney says, every man has his price.
Right.
I certainly believe that if the number was increased, he would entertain it. The other thing about extending the shot clock, if they're willing to do it, it gives us, I mean, we had Mankas' report, and then the dead, their rebuttal would give us another opportunity to get Mankas another crack at the gap car butchery, which I think he would, you know, shoot down. So I think it's something that we should be considering.
I agree. I understand how, I understand what you're doing. I'm doing the same thing, and in all honesty, if they could move it someplace a little further down, it would be fine.
And if McFadden, in fact, has not just 60 acres, but 91 acres, and for a little bit more money, I mean, for a different location, why, why say
Right. I'm with you. I can decide. I agree.
I don't think they're willing to redo it anyway, so I think it's a moot point.
I think that's what they might say, no, but it's obviously a great difference on some places.
Right.
It's obviously
Right.
What is this thing, 60 acres, a sacred
Well, it's because he can't use it for anything.
But I'm just saying, there's a lot
Maybe come back down, okay. Yeah, no, you're right. I agree with you. Don't find that surprising. I agree with you, don't find it surprising at all. All right, take a five-minute break? Or, no? Yeah, okay, let's take a five-minute break, so I can go to bathroom, they'll be right back. The suggestion has been from both attorneys, I guess basically, that we will meet with Mr. Fadden. Is that correct?
We'll attempt to, we'll offer to.
Offer, offer to meet with him?
Yeah.
And, well, I thought we were gonna meet with him, I thought
I mean, if he says no, I can't control, I can't
Oh, no, no, I understand.
That's all I'm saying, so
Okay, if he says, all right, I understand if he says no, but it would be, it would be at the, like, the Town Hall or something like that, we would meet, all right? But we would have to have an, to see if we could move the tower someplace that's acceptable to residents and to the town, as far as aesthetics go, okay? I'm sure this gentleman here spoke before, I believe him, and I think that he would be willing to do that. I think the block seems to be Mr. Fadden, and that's what we're trying to break. But we would have to have another board meeting. It'll be a public hearing, but it won't be everybody talking, it'll be a public hearing just to, you know, let everybody know whether Mr. Fadden decided, if he decided not to meet, it'll be very short hearings.
So what we had offered was that the hearing would be closed tonight, meet after the meeting with Mr. Fadden for a decision. If Mr. Fadden agrees to relocate the tower, we would ask to reopen the hearing to, you know, present that. But if he says no, then we would want a decision, we'd extend the shot clock to that next January meeting for a decision.
Okay.
We, we had offered the 22nd of January.
22nd or 29th, is that what you said? I think 22nd, all right. So that would have to, I would need to have to bring everybody back, unfortunately. I know you guys have been working for months and months and months, and hours and hours and hours. I hate to do this, but we're trying to come to some kind of an agreement. Would it be possible for, to get a quorum on January 22nd? It'll be for this meeting only, and it'll be a very short meeting. Of course, it'll be a vote, one way or the other, right? I guess. Is anybody available? Check your calendars for January 22nd, it'll be a Monday?
I can do 22nd.
22nd? I think enough, enough people? Okay. 22nd?
Hold on. One? I'm okay.
Okay? Yes?
Question. If I understand Mr. Gaudioso's position, that would mean that the public hearing would be closed tonight, but the board reconvene next month, and the shot clock would be extended until next month? The only question I have is, does the record remain open until the next meeting? And if it does, fine. If it does not, is the town going to accept the records, the documents that have been submitted by Mr. Gaudioso this evening?
So, yeah, we're not asking, let me be perfectly clear, we'd ask, we'd agree to extend the shot clock to the 22nd of January for a decision if the public hearing was closed tonight, and we would not, we would not request to submit
Submit any information.
Submit any new information. If Mr. Fadden says yes, we'll relocate it, and he'll agree to it, then we would have to consider reopening the hearing at that point.
Okay. Hi, Mr. Rod? I don't know if you feel that. I think at this point in time, the board agrees that we'll meet on the 22nd, it'll be 7:30 here. In the meantime, we'll talk to, we'll have a meeting with Mr. Fadden, and Mr. Gaudioso, and Mr. Rod, and Mr. Grainer, and see if we can find a better locate, or location that would work for everybody.
I appreciate, I think that the closing of the hearing probably needs a motion.
Yes, it does. Jessica? If you want some, sure.
If there's no more public hearing, we can't bring it in.
Yeah, all right, go ahead. All right, yes, I'll close the public hearing, but the Conservation Board wants to put something into the record.
That's fine.
Okay. Go ahead. Chairman of Public Conservation?
Good evening. This is just a statement we are gonna make to the zoning board. The Phillips Town Conservation Board has taken great care and time to review the application in front of the ZBA and our board for the proposed cell tower on Vineyard Road. We have evaluated the application and associated materials under a lens which speaks to the CB's professional expertise from science-related fields to a general contractor's perspective, focusing not only on how to mitigate impacts to the community's natural resources, but to the community as well when proposals such as this come before our board. While the CB has regulatory authority under Chapter 93 of the Phillips Town Code concerning wetlands and watercourses, our board also acts in an advisory capacity to other boards in Phillips Town, such as the ZBA. That being said, the Conservation Board would like to convey the following points before you and your board members renders a decision on the Homeland Towers application at Vineyard Road. Number one, the CB has never allowed building within wetland buffers or encroachment on watercourses unless there is an absolute compelling reason to do so, i.e. lot size restrictions, major topographic obstacles, et cetera. The fact that the landowner will not allow alternative sites on his 61-acre property to be investigated is not a compelling reason for the CB to approve the wetlands permit. The provided visual impact studies are greatly flawed. The study has undertaken, when, was undertaken when most of the foliage was still on the trees, and it appears that the study purposely, purposefully ignored vantage points from the vast amount of public lands, which include many miles of hiking trails and important scenic vistas. The current fenced-in compound size is potentially unsafe in regard to falling ice, dislodged equipment, or the catastrophic collapse of the cell tower itself. The compound would need to be significantly enlarged to provide a realistic safe zone. And lastly, while not fully within the purview of the CB, I do not think that the applicant has demonstrated without a shadow of a doubt that there is significant under-coverage of wireless mobile service, voice service in the area that is, this tower will be designed to augment. This is important because without resounding proof, the town will be setting a very troubling precedent for additional cell tower proposals. We just wanted to have that in the record.
One legal question I have before we do this is, if we meet Mr. Fadden, and we come to an agreement of a better location that does not need a wetlands permit, would the Conservation Board be required to come back to that second meeting in January?
If it, and maybe
Is that what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, my, I believe that if it had absolutely no effect and was not even in a buffer area pertaining to wetlands, and it wouldn't need, wouldn't need their approval, then they would not need to participate in approving that.
Okay. Do you understand what the goal is? Do you agree with that, or?
We don't know what the location is yet.
We don't know.
But if, if Mr. Fadden refuses to meet or stands by his position, then on the 22nd, they would need to render a decision.
Well, fine. But I do appreciate you agreeing to this very much, and the board appreciates it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And that's for the end of that, so anybody who's here for that can leave if they want. The Conservation Board can leave, you guys are done. Thank you for all the time. And I'll let you know about the next meeting, whether you're, we're gonna be needed or not. I'm sorry, Chair, oh, I gotta make a motion, yeah, I'm sorry. I have to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
I have a question before we close.
Wait, 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 one second. Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
My question is, I appreciate the, my name's Lisa Saban. I appreciate that you
Not that I broke that, not bad.
All right, sir. Lisa Saban, I appreciate that you're trying to work in good faith and trying to meet with the landowner to come to a solution that best, work best for everyone. My question is, if magic happens, and he says, okay, put it in a prettier place, does that mean you're all gonna go yay and approve it, or are you still going to take in all this evidence and have the option to do what our community strongly is urging you to do, which is to deny?
No, we still have, we still have the option to deny.
So I would just express that support of, I think it's wonderful that we're all working together in great, in good faith, but to get the assurance that that doesn't mean that all this other weighty, wonderful evidence will not be equally and continually weighty and wonderful.
No, 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 we're taking all evidence and everything else like that, and the board just trying, we're just trying to, you know, make it the best we can.
Which I fully
But if the board still has the opportunity, even if they move it, the board still has to look at the location, if they feel it's not acceptable, or whatever, if they feel even to meet the law, as far as I'm saying, then yes, the board can, can deny it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I think the Conservation Board also needs to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Public hearing.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Make a motion.
Aye.
Okay, you guys can go, thank you. And anybody's cell tower can go, thank you. Huh? Who didn't go? Aye. All right, we'll meet with this guy. Okay, thanks, guys, I appreciate it, huh?
What I told Robert is, I don't know what, I don't know if that's But if he says, sure, I'll need another $5,000. That helps us because he has to, he has to show, because that would establish that this isn't about, no, I'm not doing it, because, no, I'm not doing it for that price. He might say, he might, and then it'll be, there's nothing to do.
Yeah, we vote yes, right, go ahead.
Which one is this, Essex? I didn't bring in six grand.
Why aren't we gonna do the, 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 uh, review for completeness?
Yeah, we're gonna do, no, we're gonna do, this is great.
Oh, first?
Yeah. All right. Let's do, I'm gonna change it a little bit. I know you're okay, just, let's do the completeness, because we've been beat each other enough, so let's finish it up today. Let's do the completeness on
Great, thank you.
What you do. Okay. This is for a replacement of a tower that's been existence, the 22 Sky Lane, and the applicant seeks to amend special permit to replace an existing communications tower.
Go ahead. Uh, great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this was approved back in 1957 as a public utility rather than a communication tower, but the determination was made because Sprint was approved back in 2000, back in 2003 to go on the tower, we have to relocate them. And basically, the point is, is that the tower is 50-some-odd years old, needs to be replaced. It'll be designed to allow Verizon, which came before you and received approval in 2013, but they did not go on the tower. You subsequently approved a temporary tower because the existing tower was structurally inadequate. We also submitted three different letters from the county showing their need to come on the tower, and again, the new tower would be in the same general location, the same general height, it's a replacement tower, but would be able to support that colocation, which is encouraged by the code. We submitted the EAF, the plans, the application fee, the escrow fee, the letters of support from the county, as I mentioned, the no violations letter, and the letters of authorization. The town engineers' comments had requested some minor changes to the plans, we've already made those changes. Also requested a removal and colocation agreement, we've already prepared that agreement and had it signed by the property owner. He requested insurance certificates, we've already had those insurance certificates prepared, and, and we have them with us as well. So none of the comments in the town engineer's memo were problematic to us, and we'd be happy to respond accordingly.
Okay. Ron, is there anything else they need that we don't have here?
Again, the board has a technical memorandum from us, just as been summarized by the applicant's attorney. Memorandum outlines the procedures that are involved in moving the application along, and also identifies specific deficiencies that were in their original submittal. Provided that the revised materials satisfy this, you can obviously move it forward. It's a matter that we'd have to review whatever this latest material is. I know, tonight I was just handed a revised plan, so I can get through that and respond to the board shortly, in terms of what materials have come in and how it satisfies the deficiencies noted. And then the letter also identifies the notice requirements for notification to other localities, and also the public hearing requirements for the project.
I mean, as far as closing, is that a problem on anybody? It's a Monday. I don't see it as a problem.
It might be a holiday.
Yeah, well, yeah, but I don't see that as a problem meeting with anybody. Is everybody on the board?
I think that the following week is the 19th. That's President's Day. The 12th is...
Oh, that's President's Day, so 12th. Okay, so that would be at, the next meeting for that would be the 12th, February 12th. Are there any questions in the board as far as...
That's at Town Hall, right?
All right. As far as your view for completeness, do you want to make a motion for a view of completeness and set it up for a public hearing?
Well, just if I can ask, Rob, did we get a long form EAF? Because I think the code requires that.
I think the code requires a long form for a communications tower, but if you recall, it was, we had some back and forth, and it was not a communications tower, so I don't know if the communication tower section technically even applies. So we asked, so we'll, there's also a section in there about whether we need the variances. What my thought was is that we would notice it for the variances with the understanding that we would also ask for interpretation whether we need it or not. Because we don't think we need the variances, but I don't want to not get the variances if the board determines we need the variances. The long form, it is a replacement tower, so I don't know what additional information the long form would actually provide, and we'd ask for a waiver if we felt it was required.
I think it was brought to our attention by Mr. Gainer that the code does require a long form. I imagine, although the other regulations don't say you need it, the code augments those regulations, and it seems to say you do need it. So I think for the integrity of the application, it's probably safer to submit a long form. I can't imagine that's...
We understand.
And also, I believe there was an absence, unless it's been supplied, of visual assessment.
So this is a replacement tower? It'll look nearly identical. It's the same height. It's within, I think, 15 or 20 feet. And I'm sorry, I should have introduced, Mr. Bob Furlong came down for the meeting. He's Executive Vice President with Pamel Broughtasting, and he's here with me this evening. But the visual resource evaluation would be literally just pictures of the tower, because it's going to look exactly the same.
Again, for the complete, so the application has all of its eyes dotted, we would need that.
Would photographs of the existing tower suffice?
I defer to the board and the engineer.
Well, again, the visual assessment is an actual form that prepares what the applicant...
Ron, you're going to have to go up. I think the idea we're looking for here tonight is, we're going to have the meeting February 12th. We just continue after more review of completeness because it's not complete tonight.
That's right. That's right. And with respect to the assessment, that's physically the EAF document that's prepared by the applicant is part of the EAF. That could be done. That normally includes photographic evidence, and I think his proposal would be adequate. But as you say, the determination on completeness couldn't be held until all the...
Yeah. We can't vote on complete because it's not complete.
That's correct.
So we'll push it over to the 12th, February 12th will be the next meeting, but that'll be at Town Hall.
Yep.
At Town Hall. And maybe you could discuss during the time with Mr. Godilso and Mr. Rod exactly everything that's needed.
Yes.
And hopefully that day we could vote on a review of completion.
Very good.
Is that enough time?
Is that enough time? The 12th, or you wanting to make a longer?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we have just about everything done already. So all the other materials we already had prepared. I think really what you're just asking for is a long EAF with photographs, and we can agree on some photo locations. That shouldn't be a problem. We already have a planner engaged to prepare that.
All right, then that'll be review for completion at the 12th.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is review for completion. We'll get rid of that one. For is, let's see, 200 J Cox Road, David and Ann Provan. Are they here? Okay, Mr. Provan.
This is review for completion. Correct.
Correct, okay.
I brought my chair inside. No.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. That's this one here.
Yeah, but it's got all this stuff. So that's everything.
Go ahead.
Okay. My name's Karen Parks. I'm here tonight representing David and Ann Provan, who are the homeowners at 200 J Cox Road. And just to review the packet for completeness, as you mentioned. So if you'd like me to go through the materials we submitted...
No, I don't think so. I think we've read it, and I think the package is complete.
Yeah, I think so.
All right. Anybody have any questions on it?
No.
No. I got a motion that the application is complete. All in favor? All right, okay. And then we'll set you up for a public hearing. Okay, February 12th at 7:30. That'll be at Town Hall.
Okay.
Okay. Hopefully this cell tower, I think, will be done with by then. And that'll be the end of it. Okay, thank you.
Just one question.
Yes.
Does the zoning board send out notices to the neighbor, or is that our responsibility?
No, we do that.
Okay, thank you.
The secretary takes care of that. Okay, thank you. Just make sure she has the list of the neighbors.
We do, yes.
Okay. Supply it to our secretary in the back. Okay. Now Essex Green. I'm sorry, Mr. Richmond, and you've been extremely patient. I thank you for that.
Your board, I admire you for your perseverance. It's been a long night for you.
We try. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Before we start, I know we just started, I received an email. I don't know if you have it or not. If not, make sure you get a copy of it. It's from Greg Warner. It's to Greg Warner, actually, from the code enforcement officer from Nelsonville, William Berdżowski.
Yes, is that dated November 29th?
Yeah, about that driveway.
That confirms that.
Okay, they confirm that. The intention of the office is to issue an appropriate permit to allow the construction of an access driveway to the residence as approved on a Phillips Town portion of the site. The permit would be for related site work and include a code-compliant driveway.
Yes.
So if you get through this, you know you got a driveway.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I wanted to, I was actually going to introduce that if you did not already have it. I wanted to make sure your board had that.
Go ahead.
So we're prepared to give a full presentation. Good evening, your board, Chairman D., members of the board. My name is Daniel Richmond. I'm with the law firm of Zarin &amp; Steymetz here on behalf of Essex Green for this Douglas Lane property. Essex Green is here tonight to respectfully request that your board confirm that the property is a legal, non-conforming lot pursuant to the town's 1957 zoning code, and that based upon that confirmation, issue variances from the current town code's front yard setback and impervious surface coverage requirements. Essex Green also respectfully asks that your board further find that even if the property were not a legal, pre-existing, non-conforming lot, that it should issue the variances that the current town code would require for area, front yard setback, rear yard setback, impervious surfaces, and frontage, and as much as this project would be in harmony with the prevailing community character and otherwise conform with the standards for the applicable zoning code. I want to emphasize that I would really ask your board that even if it agrees with us on the non-conforming lot issue, which I will explain and which I think it should, that it also further find that even if that were not the case, it would find that variances should be granted, all variances should be granted, to bring some finality to this application. With me this evening are Glenn Watson from Beadie &amp; Watson, Dana Simmons from Simmons Construction, Susan Green is ill with the flu this evening, could not join us. By way of background, as you recall, the town code enforcement officer issued a denial letter dated August 25, 2017, which accepted that the property is a legal, non-conforming lot within the meaning of the town code, and determined that the applicant would need two variances, due in part to correspondence from the town's planning board and in response to referral from the ZBA and community opposition. The code enforcement officer issued a new denial letter on October 25, 2017, which stated that it was necessary for the property owner to apply to the zoning board of appeals for a code interpretation of the meaning of the words "taken for a public purpose" as used in 1957 code or in the alternative of variance to lot area. The new denial letter sets forth the variances that would be required should the board concur that the property is a legal, non-conforming lot, and alternative variances that would be required should your board find that the property is a legal, pre-existing, non-conforming lot. And again, we're requesting that the board find that the property is a legal, non-conforming lot, and further determine, even if it does confirm that it is a non-conforming lot, that the variances would be, should be granted. The history of this property and the basic maxims of statutory interpretation, as we've explained to your board in several correspondence, indicate that this property is a non-conforming lot. As this board is aware, Section 17523 defines a non-conforming lot to be, quote, "A lot of record which is created legally but which no longer complies with the area's shape, frontage, or locational provisions of this chapter." As we have explained again to the board, the property was legally created pursuant to an exemption in effect at the time of the property's creation, which was codified in Section 9B of the town's 1957 zoning code, which specifically exempted reductions in areas of parcels where the land was, quote, "taken for a public purpose." Factually, it is undisputed that in 1966, the Village of Cold Spring acquired approximately one acre of land from the parent parcel from which this property derives for the public purpose of establishing a municipal connection to the Catskill Aqueduct. Cold Spring's board of trustees in approving that acquisition specifically stating that, quote, "Such land was vital and an important link in the connection with the proposed New York City water supply." Under basic maxims of statutory construction, Cold Spring's acquisition of this land for a public purpose fits within the scope of Section 9B of the 1957 code. It has been incorrectly argued by certain members of the public that Section 9B of 1957 is only applicable where the government is, quote, "forcibly taken pursuant to eminent domain," notwithstanding the fact that the term eminent domain does not appear, and there is no such limiting language in Section 9B. This argument, again, as we've demonstrated to your board in repeated correspondence, violates numerous maxims of statutory construction. To begin with, that zoning restrictions being in derogation of the common law property rights should be strictly construed in any ambiguity resolved in favor of the property owner. Moreover, it is also axiomatic that interpreting this statute, as the Court of Appeals has held, the starting point must be the language itself, giving effect to its plain meaning. In fact, Article 2 of the Phillips Towns 1957 code, which is the definition sections of the code, specifically establishes that except or specifically defined, all words used in this order shall carry their customary meanings. Here, the word "taken" is simply the past participle of the verb "take" in its plain and ordinary sense, which simply means to get possession of, get hold of, or obtain or acquire. Even Black's Law Dictionary, the first two definitions comport with this plain and ordinary meaning of to obtain possession, control, whether legally or illegally, or, quote, "to seize with authority." The argument that a restriction must be read into this provision, which is not in the law itself, ignores the fact, as the Court of Appeals has repeatedly also held, that, quote, "The absence of a word in the law is a meaningful and intentional," as we have previously observed, that the failure of a legislator to include a term in the statute is a significant indication that its exclusion was intended. Or, as the Court of Appeals has elsewhere repeatedly held, quote, "We have firmly held that the failure of the legislator to include a substantive, significant prescription in statute is a strong indication that the exclusion was intended." Stated differently, as the Court of Appeals has further held, quote, "New language cannot be imported into a statute to give it a meaning not otherwise found therein." Moreover, again, as the Court of Appeals has held, is improper effectively to, quote, "amend a statute by inserting words that are not there," and is improper to, quote, "read into a statute provision which the legislator did not see fit to enact." Again, an inference must be drawn that what is admitted or not included was, as the Court of Appeals held, intended to be admitted or excluded. Accordingly, the contention that the additional language or restrictions, such as compliance with eminent domain procedures, should be grafted onto or read into Section 9B of the town's 1957 zoning law cannot be countenanced. This is particularly true where such an interpretation would cause hardship or injustice. Simply put, if the town board had in 1957 intended to restrict Section 9B application to, quote, "forcible government action," or, quote, "eminent domain," it would have been easy enough for it to have done so. Moreover, as attested to by Mr. Watson, who had a close working relationship with Mr. Doyle, who served as counsel at the time for both the Village of Cold Spring as well as the town, based on his personal knowledge and practices, Mr. Doyle would never have engaged in a process that create an illegal subdivision or allowed the creation of a non-buildable lot. It's also reasonable to conclude that the owners of the property's parent parcel, including one who was a practicing attorney who graduated from Harvard Law School, would also not have allowed Cold Spring to acquire property for a contemplated aqueduct connection so as to remainder the remainder land illegal. As such, the property is a non-conforming lot, exempt from Phillips Towns code's requirements for area, shape, frontage, or coverage. Nevertheless, in an excess of caution, we are asking that your board determine that such variances would be appropriate. Again, should the board concur with us that the property is a legal, non-conforming lot, the only variances that would be required would be from the technical, front yard setback, and impervious surface requirements. As the board obviously knows, in determining whether to grant the requested area variances, the board must engage in the balancing test by statute, quote, "In making determination, the zoning board shall take into consideration the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted as weighed against a detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant." And town law, as the board knows, establishes a five-factor test to consider whether the undesirable change would be produced as a result of the variances, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method, whether the requested variance is substantial, and whether the proposed variance will have an adverse impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, and whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. This analysis, rationally applied here, to these facts, shows that the requested variance should be granted because the result will be a single-family home that is wholly in harmony with the prevailing pattern of community development in this area. Respectfully, there can be no reasonable argument that the project would produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, adversely impact physical or environmental conditions, or otherwise result in detriment to the health, safety, welfare of the neighborhood or the community. First, with respect to the front yard setback, the Phillips Town zoning code requires a 60-foot setback in this subject RC zoning district. Here, the town code enforcement officer has determined that the proposed house would have a zero front setback, which he measured from the town line. Again, as your board will recall, the town line bisects the property. We would submit that the use of the municipal boundary to the property to calculate the required front yard was incorrect. The Phillips Town zoning code defines a setback as the distance between a structure and a property line, which would be here, the center line of a road, or an identified natural feature such as a water course. In any event, as a practical matter, as the board can see, the property extends beyond the town line and has land located to Douglas Lane as well as Moffett Road. Measured from Douglas Lane, the single-family residence would actually be set back approximately 73.8 feet from the road, which is in excess of the setback requirement. Again, so in reality, the property provides significant front yard setback that we submit, should submit the code's intention, and again, demonstrates that the property would be consistent with community character. Impervious surface coverage, again, the Phillips Town code limits impervious surface to 10% while the project would result in 13%. Again, that is just factoring in just this portion of the property in the town of Phillips Town, not factoring into the portion of the property that is in the Village of Nelsonville, and that would remain largely undeveloped, except for the driveway, which you referred to, Mr. Chair. As such, with respect to impervious coverage, while the concern is stormwater and runoff, not only is the variance minimal, but the project will, again, sit on a much larger parcel than was used to calculate the variance. And in reality, the project will be able to accommodate the stormwater runoff from its impervious surfaces. Should your board determine that the property is a legal, non-conforming lot, again, these are the only variances that would be required according to the code enforcement officer. But Essex Green, again, requests that your board also further go beyond this to address the code's area, rear yard setback, and frontage requirements, which the code enforcement officer said would apply if it were not a legal, non-conforming lot. With respect to lot area, considering only the Phillips Town portion of the property, as the code enforcement officer did, the property is .55 acres, while the town code requires a minimum of 10 acres in the district. In reality, the proposed single-family home will be located on a 1.43-acre property, which we submit that in the analysis considers how the, we submit that analysis that considers how the variances would affect the public's perception of an area, the entirety of the property must be considered in assessing the instant variance request. As demonstrated, and Glenn Watson will speak to this point, there are multiple properties in the area that are two acres or less. I believe there are approximately 30 lots in the area that are two acres or less, and about 20 lots in the area that are between two and five acres. Glenn, I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Are you ready?
Yeah. And also, Glenn, if you could talk to, you know, one of the other remarks that a member of the public made was the proposed house would be the largest house and the smallest lot in the area, and significantly changed the character. And again, as Glenn can demonstrate, at the same time, the property is actually thoroughly in keeping with the size of other houses in the immediate area.
The subject property is here in the center of the drawing, and it's bounded in red. And what you see, the triangular shape, is the entire piece of property, the smaller, which is split by the town-village line. Those parcels, we went through the tax maps, and those parcels that you see here in green are all under two acres. Those are, those that you see here in blue are... Those are, those that you see here in blue are between two and five acres.
Are there homes on those, on those two-acre properties?
There's homes, there's home here, I believe there's a home here, there is homes here, there's home here for sure, yes, there's a home there, there, there. I believe there's homes here.
Okay.
I don't know, I can't, I can't rattle them all off. And there's, there's several homes along this, along, along Hillie Road. These are the Veloletto subdivision, so there's, there's several homes here.
On the two-acre ones, or, because I thought you pointed all to the five-acre.
There are homes on the two-acre ones as well. I'm sorry, I thought that's who was asking. That's, that's the former Maranti home, there's a new home being constructed here on this lot, there's a couple of homes in here, there are homes on most of these lots, I'm not sure if they're all built.
I know there's, with a home, with no homes being constructed, along that road is, there's homes on two of them.
And, okay, so the, the triangle that is the property in, in Phillips Town is, okay, but these people also own land in Cold Spring, right?
Nelsonville.
Nelsonville. But, I mean, adjacent.
It's split in half.
Yeah, yeah.
The town line kind of runs the middle of the property.
Okay, so, okay, so that...
The property actually is 1.4, something like that, or?
Yes.
1.3 acres.
1.3 acres.
1.4.
Oh, what, the Phillips Town one, or the...
What's, what's happening is here, this, the property is split.
Right.
Part of it's in Phillips Town, a smaller part, part of it's in Phillips Town, and Nelsonville as well. And we're applying the Phillips Town rules because the house was moved into Phillips Town, really at, at the suggestion of the building department so that they didn't have a, I think, really administered a problem.
Which part is Phillips Town and which part is Cold Spring?
Nelsonville.
I mean, Nelsonville.
This triangle, that's, this triangle is Phillips Town.
Okay, and the, and...
And this, this, this little area is Nelsonville.
Okay, and the, and the triangle on the map, the other map, is that just the Phillips Town portion of the...
No, that's the entire piece of property.
Oh, okay.
Took the whole thing, which is...
The other issue that was raised that was, that we're presenting the largest house on the smallest lot. Well, there can only be one smallest lot, so that, so they're sort of taking a double entendre in making that point. I mean, they're, they're, they're trying to make it twice as much as it is. It's a, not the, it's not the, it's not the largest house in the area, and it's also not the smallest lot. It's among the smaller lots, so it's not both. And if you think about the logic of the statement, it's, it really doesn't make sense, because you can, you can't have another smallest lot to have a smaller house on.
Are there, are there other lots that are less than two acres there?
Oh, yeah. They're, they're in here, these, these things are 1.5.
I thought, oh, I thought you said the green ones were the two-acre ones.
Two acres and under.
An under, oh, okay.
Two acres and under.
Okay.
Our point was to, to show, to give you some, here's 1.1.5, 1.5, 1.6, 1.7, so they're, they're around, in the general area where we are. There's a couple up here, this is .9 acres, this is one acre. So, we have a piece of property that is consistent with the other lots around, and that's what we're trying to demonstrate. We also, you want, you want to?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to go there next. I know there was some concern for the, for the, how it would affect people who might have a view. So we took a look at that, and this is what this is to demonstrate. This is the house, this is, this planned view is the, the proposed house adjacent to the aqueduct, is darker gray, and above it are one, two, three houses. This is John Patrick Maloney's house, I don't, I think that's also part of, on the same piece of property. This is, for those, maybe the Condeck people, anybody know the Condeck House? This is, this is an old, this is an converted barn that's right on, on Moffett Road, that's right up. So what we did is we, sorry, we, we drew a profile from each of the houses over the proposed house. And, and this gets, it's a little, it has to be drawn in two different scales. Vertically, it's different, it's not as steep. If we drew it with an absolute scale, it would, it would look just flat to you, because there's so much relief here, there's so little, actually little relative relief. So we took a point in each house, and we drew a line towards the near edge of the Hudson River, just a straight line, straight shot down to the water, that passed over the house. And then we drew what the house was, and you can see it's exaggerated vertically to make. And in the case of, I'll check which one I'm doing, A, which is from Representative Maloney's house, right across the top, towards the northwest, there's a significant distance between the top of the house, the proposed house, and the line to see the river. Similarly, from the other house on his property, there's not quite as much, but there's still a significant shot over the top of the house that, if you can see the river, you're not, it's not going to be interfered with. With the Condeck House, which is the old barn, it's, if there is, there will be some roof, but I also actually think that this is not a river view this way, or if it's, if it is, it's very distant, because it's, it's going on an angle towards the river instead of directly towards the river. So, we don't think there'll be a, a significant impediment to people's views, and that's what that's supposed to show you.
Glenn, just before, are you still on that one?
Yeah.
Could also walk through, you know, an Exhibit G to our November 3, 2017 submission. You talked about the, its comparison to the prop.
They don't have that on there. Oh, that's right, this, this is from the submission. Just incidentally, when we look, talk about these houses, House A is a 4,500, 4,460-square foot footprint. House B, which is this one, is a 3,725-foot square foot footprint. House C, which is this one, is a 3,514-square foot. House D, which is the Myers House, and we didn't get in there to check it, but from the aerial photos, we determined it has something about a 4,500 footprint, but that may include a covered garage or, or something like that, so we couldn't tell. The house that's being proposed is 3,300 square feet. So it's, it's right in line with the two in the middle, so, and House E, where's, House E is?
Towards the river.
Oh, yeah, I guess, this is E. I guess that's E. Yeah, I'm not sure where E is, I'm not going to, I'm not going to point at it. But that, that one is 20, 2,600 feet. So at any rate, we don't have the largest house on the smallest lot, as impossible as that may seem, so. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I wanted to show you a couple of things from Susan Green. I mentioned a couple of times, I kind of did it on purpose, I called the Condeck House a barn. And for those of you that know that house, it's a converted, it's a converted barn, at least. And what Susan Green does, she builds houses that are modeled after barns. And what we'll have is a relatively small barn, because barns often are 10,000 square feet or something like that, this barn will be 3,000 square feet. Typically, you'll see on her houses, barn doors, sliding barn doors, and this will be a, really be a barn in a field. It will not be, in my view, it will not be inconsistent. I actually, I actually find her designs very appealing from a, from an aesthetic point of view. I wish I could tell you I'm an expert in aesthetics, but my wife will tell you I can't even pick out a good tie, so, but, sorry. They usually give me one that clips on, yell at me when I forget. But at any rate, Susan has a, has a style, she has several homes in the town, I'm sure that you've passed more than one of them in your travels around town. They're, they're unobtrusive, they're pleasant-looking, they're always muted colors, they're, and just very pleasant to look at.
What's, what's the total height, at its highest point?
I don't know the answer.
I think we are at 16.
I have that answer somewhere. I do have that answer. I think. I'm going to have to change that tape soon.
Is it now?
Yeah, it's doing now. I'm going to wait, she's going to have to change the tape. You ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so front yard and surface coverage, if we vote, if we voted a non-conforming lot, I guess, basically, right?
Legal non-conforming.
Legal non-conforming. And if we vote, now, it's not a legal non-conforming, what do we need then?
The same two variances, plus a rear yard setback, and an area variance.
Okay.
Lot area.
And also frontage.
And frontage.
That was something.
Front yard or road frontage?
Road frontage.
Okay.
Again, this is on page four of our November 2017 submission.
All right, so, if we voted legal non-conforming, we need a front and, what else, I'm sorry?
If you voted...
Front and...
Well, I, I should just mention on the denial letter, and I'll reread it as you're speaking, I don't, I believe all it would require would be a road access permit under town code chapter 112, and that would take care of road frontage.
Okay, well, I think we got that, that was from the initial email that I think the chair read.
Correct, but the most recent denial does not talk about road frontage.
Okay.
Okay, the, I, we did have it on the chart in what was submitted to you, the building height is 30.3 feet, 40 is allowed in the zone, and just to be sure you understand that 30.3 feet and the 40 feet are measured to the mean height between the peak and the eve.
Okay.
Anything else, you guys are going on?
I think, unless you have any questions, we're...
Okay, no, I just, I think, like I say, we're going to hear from the public, and then I guess it would be just a thing in how we vote, you know, as far as, you know, what's going on.
Just a couple other points of, I could, Mr. Chair, again, I think, you know, as Glenn has shown, the house would look like any other single-family home in the neighborhood. One of the other variances that would be required if the board said it were a non-conforming lot, and again, we ask it to make this finding, regardless of how you come up on the legal non-conforming lot issue, is rear yard setback, which, again, we deem to be essentially something that doesn't have a real-world impact. Technically, the code requires 50 feet of setback, whereas the property, the, the project would only be providing 24 feet, but as you can see from the map, in fact, the rear yard would not be visible, and as Glenn demonstrated, for many of the neighboring properties, reality is that there's the Catskill Aqueduct immediately behind it, and so there would actually be over 200 feet between it and the nearest privately-owned property. And the Catskill Aqueduct, as the board may be aware, is covered with trees and other vegetation, so it would be minimally visible, if at all, from the property owned to the rear. Frontage, as Mr. Rod pointed out, we appear to have satisfied by having the building code officer from the Village of Nelsonville confirm that he would be issuing a road opening permit. So in sum, the only change to the neighborhood would be the addition of a single-family home. The applicant cannot achieve the desired benefit without the variances. Indeed, without the variances, Essex Green could not develop the property and be improperly denied the use of its land. It's now completed two design iterations, it changed the layout, so that it lies only in Phillips Town, based on discussions with both municipalities. Without the variances, it could not develop the property. While several of the requested variances may be numerically substantial, as I'm sure your board has heard in prior applications, substantiality is not measured in the abstract, but is considered in terms of the, all the relevant circumstances here, which, again, as we have shown, all the relevant circumstances show that this would be essentially a single-family home like many others in the neighborhood, would have, be visually imperceptible from the rest of the community. The variances have no impact, adverse impact on the environment. Again, it's a type-two action, under secret presumably has no environmental impacts, granting variances for single-family homes. DOH previously had granted approvals, and we, if the board wanted to condition it on getting updated approval for this project, we'd be happy to do that. Certainly not a self-created hardship in the first instance. Again, our client bought a legal non-conforming lot, we would submit, most of the setbacks, we'd submit our technicalities. When purchasing the property, I think she had every reason to anticipate that any, if any, variances would get, yes, sir?
When the, when the applicant bought the property, did he know of its limitations?
Did she know, I'm not sure if she's... I'm not sure if she knew the extended limitations, but I think she expected that it would be buildable based on the fact that it had DOH approval when she acquired it, and I think based on her just general knowledge of, you know, she's done many projects in the area.
Had bought a health approval when she purchased it?
Yes.
Okay.
So again, in summation, when the required variances are viewed for the prism of other homes in the neighborhood, of whether, many of which are actually significantly larger, granting the variances would not harm the community, it would certainly benefit our client, and we respectfully request that your board grant, determine that it's a non-conforming lot, and grant all the necessary variances. Should your board have any questions, we're here to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions right now, I don't think, there'll probably be more. Anybody, anyone want to speak from the audience? All right, yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. So I don't exactly know where to start after, that was...
How was your name?
Josh Meyer. I'm here on behalf of, with my brother Jeff, on behalf of the Meyer family, who are directly across the driveway here, Douglas Lane, we're, we own this property right here. And so, to begin with, I think we do have to probably take it step by step.
Sure.
Initially, it's on the interpretation issue, I believe, because that's going to dictate the number of variances that we'll have to address, so we should probably take it maybe, maybe in that regard. I mean, I do think, I really do believe, and I can't believe that we're in this position where there's a misunderstanding that there is an ambiguity in the law. I think that the term "taken for a public purpose" is very clear, it's a very clear legal term of art. I agree 100% with the statutory interpretation theory that if the town wished to draft in specific words into the, into the law for the exemption, that they would have said "acquired for a public purpose." So if it was acquired for a public purpose, the, the Village of Cold Spring could have purchased it at arm's length, a voluntary purchase, which is what this was, or they could have done it pursuant to eminent domain, which obviously did not occur. But, but it is very clear, I do have some documents I can provide to the board with the, the backup and with documentation that, that discusses what "taken for a public purpose" really means. Under the Fifth Amendment, really, I do believe that it, were you to, to, to rule on this interpretation, that "taken for a public purpose" does not mean forcibly taken from the homeowner. I really do believe it sets back constitutional law 200 years, because the Fifth Amendment is adopted in 1789, and, and it contained the language in there, taken, that no property shall be taken for a public use without just compensation. Very closely tracks what this language is. The New York State Constitution also has very similar language, that you can't take property for public use without just compensation. Very closely tracks what's in here. The, the Phillips Town Zoning Commission was actually formed in 1953. In 1954, the Supreme Court came out with a seminal case, Berman v. Parker, where they actually modified the language and for the first time said that property can't be taken for a public purpose. Not for a public use, if the public, if it was a public park and the, or a public road that the public could use, but it was for any piece of property that was a public benefit. And so, in 1954, while the, while the Phillips Town Zoning Commission was in the process of drafting their code, this seminal Supreme Court case came out and said that, and modified the, the way that it appears in the, in the Fifth Amendment, didn't modify the Fifth Amendment, but modified the way that was to be interpreted to mean taken for a public purpose. And the only way that that can be interpreted is if the... And the only way that that can be interpreted is if the government forcibly took it. There's no other reason for the protection for anyone. There's, there's, there's only one case I could find out there for or against, in the national database, that addresses this specific language that is in the Phillips Town's law, dealing with taking for, with this type of exemption. It was a Vermont, I do have a copy of the case, I have enough copies if the board would like to see it. I do have it discussed in the write-up as well. That is a Vermont environmental case. And it was the same exact exemption as to what, the way that the Phillips Town's law reads. And the, and the language and the way that their decision came out on it, and like I said, I do have a copy of it. It is, it is, and it's interpreted exactly the way that I believe that was meant to be interpreted. What the court said there is that section contains an exception if the reduction in lot area is due to part of the original lots having been taken for a public purpose. That is, if the reduction in lot size was beyond the control of the original lot owner. Section 709 does not apply. It does not apply because the conveyance of the undersized lot was voluntary on the part of the original lot owner. So it's exactly what happened here. Under village law, New York State village law, any, any village can go out and purchase a piece of property at any time that they want to, just like anyone else can. That's all they did. They went to the homeowner, or they went to the property owner, who was selling, sold about two dozen of their properties within about a two-year period because they were just getting rid of their properties. That's exactly what they did here. Nobody, the government didn't come in, they didn't take it for a public purpose. I've never heard that in the customary usage. When I go and purchase a piece of property or somebody does that, I don't go out and say, "I took it for a private purpose," and say that. I just don't, I have no idea where that would ever come about, where someone would, if you, if you purchase it voluntarily, that you would ever say that you took it for a public purpose, that you took it, you purchased it, you acquired it. In this write-up, I have a dozen and a half other, from a dozen and a half other communities around the United States that instead of saying "taken for a public purpose," they said "acquired for a public purpose." And that's exactly what, if Phillips Town had chosen to build that language in. And, and they did not do that because there was no reason to protect those, to protect somebody if, if the government purchased it voluntarily. When they made that transaction, they just should have known better, and they should know better, not to diminish the size of their property to lessen what the standard was at the time. So it's exactly what happened here, voluntary, arm's-length transaction. And there's, and there was no reason to protect that homeowner, that property owner. They knew exactly what they were getting into. They did that. Maybe there was a mistake, maybe the, I don't understand what the bearing is as to what Mr. Doyle, as the village attorney, whether he knew it or not. What's, what's very strange to me is that they're making the, the argument that Mr. Doyle and the property owner, who was a Harvard Law grad, made a mistake. They, maybe they didn't understand where the line was. It's very odd to me because their own client made the same exact mistake with the benefit of the internet, computers, aerial, you know, satellite images. And she didn't recognize all the issues were with this. But they expected Mr. Doyle and Mr. O'Neil, the property owner, to understand that. And so I'm not quite sure where that comes into play. And actually, what's, what's very strange on this is that when Mr. Watson originally looked at this, and in the April report that you have, Mr. Watson said at the time that the deed to the village does not support the notion that the land was taken. The deed does not indicate that it was a result of a taking. On its face, the 1966 subdivision was not eligible for the exemption provided in the zoning law in effect at the time and should have obtained area variances. I believe that there was a subsequent affidavit that Mr. Watson addressed, and he, and he basically reversed course on it, but I believe that he understands that that was the correct interpretation at the time.
I'm a little confused. Are you in support of the application or against the application?
Against the application. What I'm saying is the.
Why though?
Why? Because what we're asking for is, what the property owner's trying to do is this property is zoned for 10 acres. She is trying to put in a tremendous, you know, a 3,300, 3,500 square-foot house on a property that's supposed to be zoned for 10 acres, and she's trying to get it on a .55 acre piece of property.
It's not really .55. I mean, the whole, the entire piece of property is 1.43.
Pursuant to the Town Law, Section 261, though, this body cannot look beyond your own line. You can, you can only address the zoning laws outside of the incorporated villages. And so, so you're.
Common sense has to be used also.
No, 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 but the law says that you cannot look beyond this. Here, and I'll tell you why that, that is. You have no control over this parcel right here, the Nelsonville parcel. Right here is, is the Coal Spring parcel, and, which is in Phillips Town, here as well. As a result of precedence, you approve this one, somebody comes along and buys Coal Spring, you're going to be required to approve that one.
First of all, we're not required. All, all, all things are different. My meaning by that is we've passed one thing on one side of the street and denied it on the other side of the street.
Okay, I'll take that back. I'll take that back. I agree with you.
That's not true.
Most likely, you will be granting this because it's, it's right next to this and it's larger than this piece. This is .61, this is .55. Very likely, if somebody comes along and they buy this, they'll be looking to put a house in here.
Is there an easement for Coal Spring water, though? I mean, to get to the aqueduct?
That's not an easement, no, no, the easement's actually across the road. They actually have a fee title ownership for these two parcels.
So they bought that to get to the aqueduct, though?
That's correct. That's correct.
I'm sorry?
Which can, which can be taken away at any time. Plus, since you have no control, a house could be built on the Nelsonville side potentially, and one here. So here's a piece of property, it's 2.414 acres in total. And you have the potential, you grant this one, due to precedent, which I agree is not required, but, but most likely, someone's going to come along and say, "You're treating similarly, similar things differently." And you'd be looking to put a house right here. So now, this is owned for 20 acres, and you'd be getting two houses in when it's just over an acre. And then, and then you have no control here. If they can get septic in here, then they could put two houses in here. Actually, when, and when Board of Health, when this was Board of Health approved, that means nothing when somebody comes in to buy a piece of property. That means that you can get a septic on there. That has nothing to do with when, whether or not pursuant to the town's zoning laws that you can get a house here. So when she came in, and she said it was Board of Health approved, she's an experienced developer. She, she entered into the contract in August and closed in October. She didn't do any due diligence on this property. She just felt that she could get it in there and cram a house in there.
Can I just ask, I guess either you or Beady and Watson are the attorney. The, the two segments, I understand there's one segment in Phillips Town and there's one segment in Nelsonville. What are the, what are the acreage on each segment?
So it would be five point, the entire property is 1.43 acres.
1.43 or what?
1.43 acres.
Oh, so.
So this portion of the property is.
Now, if you're gonna give any advice, give it to the secretary.
Oh, yeah?
If you would.
Hold on a second. So that's exactly the way about that.
Sorry.
Give it to her.
The entire property is 1.43 acres. This portion of the property, which is in Phillips Town, is .55 acres. This portion of the property, which is in Nelsonville, is .89 acres.
Okay, all right, and then, but this, this man had said that this area is zoned for 10 acres, is that right?
This, in the Town of Phillips Town, this portion is 10-acre zoning.
But we've seen that in Phillips Town, there are other nearby houses that are on 2 acres and less.
Yes.
So how is that?
I can speak to that.
So, 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 the, what's interesting about, and do you mind if I borrow yours? So what's interesting about, about this is that the majority of the ones that they are. Is that, is that a trick? Is that, is that the?
Yes, to get my opposition on.
That's good, that sounds good. I don't need any help with that. So, so these are actually, when they're making the comparison, what's interesting is these are all in Nelsonville. You know, so, so they're sort of comparing apples and oranges because this.
They're pretty close, because I've driven through the area.
No, no question they're close. These all, these all, and I do have an analysis on there for down Healy Road that shows the majority of these were actually developed pre-zoning from Nelsonville. And, and the reason why it's apples and oranges is because this has a, Nelson, the Town of Phillips Town obviously has its own zoning standard and what they require. And, and this is Hillside Residential in Nelsonville, which is 1.5 acres. But the majority of these.
But Nelsonville is part of the Town of Phillips Town anyway.
Right, it's, but you're, but to compare the two, but, you know, would be, like I said, apples and oranges. But actually, these all predated zoning. So, so.
Where's your property on that map?
Where's the subject property?
No, your property.
Our property is this one right here.
In Nelsonville.
It's all in Nelsonville, yes, that's correct. Yes, that's correct. So, so this is actually across, you know, part of their line, butts ours, part of their property butts ours. But in, in Phillips Town, the, the average parcel size, though, are these ones in white, if you're looking. I agree that this is the neighborhood and that's what you look at. But this is, this all meets the zoning, though. This is 1.5 acres or less, and, and these actually, except for one or maybe two, they all predated zoning. So it's not really, and so you're comparing 1.5-acre parcels, not against 1.434. You, you're required pursuant to the law to be at .55 acres because of the reason that I said, that they could build a, if you look at it at 1.434, it's sort of a false assumption because they're looking, you're, you're including Nelsonville, and they have the potential to actually go to Nelsonville after your approval and try to get another house in there. And then somebody could buy the property next to that and try to get two houses in there. And that's exactly what the developer has done back in, I believe, 2002 or so. Built a house on J Cox, clear-cut it.
This particular developer?
This developer bought, and I do have the article here that discusses this. She bought the property, put the house in, clear-cut all the woods, then went to the planning board, said, "Oh, by the way, I want to build another house on here." The neighbors all came out and said, "Wait a minute, she clear-cut the property, we don't, we don't like it." She went to get the other house in there, they put restrictions on it that she couldn't clear-cut the trees. She went and did it anyhow, violated it. There's a big issue with that, and, and they penalized her. Fine her $500 and required her to, to put back all the trees to the tune of $20,000 to $30,000 in labor.
So if we, if we were to consider this, but to make a, a condition on our, if we approved it, that she could only build one house on that property, would that make?
That's only on Phillips Towns, though, not, not Nelsonville. You won't have the control over Nelsonville's property in that regard. But it wouldn't be binding on them because you could go to Nelsonville and it would not be binding.
Yeah, but the driveway goes, the driveway would go through Nelsonville, correct?
The driveway would go through Nelsonville, right, right. But, but, but it's possible that they could, like I said, we have no idea what they would do. We have no idea if the Board of Health regulations, they already in the past five years were reduced for the size of the, of the septic fields there. You just never know in the future is what I'm saying on that.
So unclear, the, it's, the applicant owns the lot that is bisected by municipal boundary, correct? So as a condition of a potential grant, the board could say, as the lot owner, as a condition of approval, they cannot subdivide or build more than one house or whatever other condition.
Like I said, you, you only control what's outside of the incorporated village. So I'm not quite sure how that would, to be totally honest with you, I'm not quite sure how that would work. You, you, you could try to do that, you could try to do that, I just don't know if, if that would work ultimately. But, but like I said, if, if we take it, if we take it step by step, the first thing is the interpretation. And then, and then that'll dictate sort of, because if, if you said that, that you agree with, with our interpretation, which is "taken for a public purpose" means the village had to come in, and, and like I said, by all accounts, there's not a single case out there that, that we could locate that has, that "taken for a public purpose" means anything other than a forcible seizure, the municipality came in and involuntarily restricted the property rights. There's, there's, there's no other way to interpret that. There's no ambiguity on that, that issue. And what happens with that is, if you agree with our interpretation, then the variance that you would have to grant, then it's not a legal nonconforming lot. Then it would be an illegal, substandard, nonconforming lot, in which case they would not be grandfathered in. And what they would need is a, basically a 95% variance, 94.5% variance for the area because it's .55 acres and they need 10. And so, so that's in addition to the rear setback, which they would need over 50% variance. And there's other issues, including 280A of the Town Law, where, where they don't abut a, a town road. This is a landlocked piece of property as far as Phillips Town's review of it.
I'm gonna argue, you've been saying all along that we can't consider anything that happens in Nelsonville, correct? Then we shouldn't even be concerned about your property, is that correct? Right?
No, but we're, but we're joining landowners, though. Then so, and there's other people here from, from Phillips Town as well. But, but it's not only that, it's not only having to do with, to protect ours, but it's also enforcing the, the way that this property has developed. Like I said, it's very, it's, it's very, all I'm doing is not making creative legal arguments, but just asking that the, the board enforce the, the laws that are on the books and were in 1957, which says that if it was taken for a public purpose, then they were exempted from, from when their property was diminished, reduced below one acre.
If there was some way that we could ensure that, that only one house was going to be built on that property, would that allay your concerns, if there was some legal way that that could be assured?
No, no, right, no, and it wouldn't.
You don't want anything built on it.
We, we're looking for nothing to be built on it because, because like I said, what?
I'm just asking. I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, no, and I, right, and, and, right, and so we're asking that nothing be built on that property. What it is, is that, what we're asking the board to do is to enforce the zoning laws that are on the books and, and not allow the developers to come in, try to get a piece of property like this that's not, not supposed to be built on based on the way that the, the laws read. It's zoned for 10 acres, on .55, they're looking to put in a 3,300 square-foot house. And, and, and to be honest with you, the, Beady and Watson had said that, you know, and there's, there's been many misstatements by the developers throughout this, this whole process. What Beady and Watson is saying is that, is that my parents' house is 4,777 square feet. It's approximately 2,900 square feet. I'm sure the assessor would love to, would love to know if it's 4,777. It's, it's 2,900 square feet. The barn, or the other property that's referenced on this one, on this, that's on, on this one right here, House B, that's a barn, that's not a, that's not a residence. And House C, the condax, is not what they say is 3,300 square feet, it's about 2,700 square feet. And this is, this is all publicly available information. And what has occurred throughout this process, in our estimation, is that the developer is, is saying and doing anything to get this house put in here. If you go through the five factors, which we're prepared to do, one of which is whether or not it's a self-created hardship. This developer went in and did no due diligence. This is what this, and this is what we're trying to prevent, the board from condoning that type of behavior here. Go in, do no due diligence. Mr. Watson had said to, to me at the time, he contrasted it with a piece of property that was for sale across from Bosco Bell. Flat piece of property, more than a minimum standard, and the percolation test, and the soil was very good for percolation tests. He said that one wouldn't really ever require that much due diligence. On this one, it has slopes on the property, it's a very sloped piece of property, it's a very tight piece of property. You have the, 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 the boundary, municipal boundary line going through it. You have the aqueduct right there, very difficult to, to get that house in there. And, and this is what the board would be condoning with this because it's a, it's clearly a self-created hardship. And depending on the way that, that the interpretation is, the substantial variance is. And depending on the way that, that the interpretation is, the substantial variances are something that would have to be dealt with. That's why this is, like I said, one step at a time. If we determine, depending on how you feel about the interpretation issue, then you would go down with the variances and determine whether or not 10 acres, and there's plenty of case law out there that says 95% variance is more than substantial, is substantial to the extreme, and it's, and it's, and it would not be appropriate, and it would be perfectly within the board's purview to deny the variances along those lines.
All right. You have some information that you want to give to the board, I guess, right?
Yes.
You have some pages, okay.
Yes.
Other people want to, how many people want to talk on this tonight? Okay. All right. We're never going to get through this tonight. We could see that. I'm sorry?
I said, "Okay."
Okay. So, and this gentleman wants to give us some, the board some information I think that the board should, should have to look at. I agree with that. So what I'd like to do, I know you, Mr. Richmond, you've been extremely patient at this. I understand. I don't think we're going to get through this tonight. It's almost 11 o'clock at night. If I could put you at first on the agenda of the January, of the February 12 meeting, let me finish, before you say no. I'm doing a lot of negotiating tonight. All right, we could, to put you first on the agenda, okay? This way it'll give anybody a chance, if they wanted the board to put any information in. They'll give it to the town or secretary, okay? It has to be all presented to her by February 1. Anything presented after February 1 will not be looked at, okay? And you'll be first on the agenda, and I guarantee that we will, we will vote one way or the other, because we're not going to do this tonight, because we're not going to get out of here till 2 o'clock in the morning.
Sir, do you mind if I, I have to try, I won't be here on February 12. Can I just say what I'm going to say?
You say, you're going to say you don't want the house, correct? You don't want it built?
For different reasons.
Okay. For different reasons. Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry. I'll let you say.
I mean, if everyone's here, I think should be given an opportunity to speak, I would submit, and then I would ask that the board close the public hearing, if you want to give, add 10 days for written submission, or something like that.
I'm against closing the public hearing.
I don't want to close it either.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, it has been a long night, but if a few of us could speak, I promise I will keep my remarks on this in two minutes.
All right, well, you know, it's up to the board. It's...
Yeah, well, I'll listen again, so it doesn't matter, right?
Excuse me?
I've been here all night.
So have we.
To this, and I, I gave up what I considered my life watching a football game. Believe it or not, Alabama's the national championship, and I'm here waiting patiently since 7:30.
I hope you taped it.
And I, I think you guys are the best. I watch on TV. You're doing everything. If you want to continue exactly where we left off, I don't have a problem with it. I'll come back, as long as it's the same setting, the same maps, because those are intriguing, the way they're set up, to make you think that there's more to it. It's not giving you a clear picture at all. If you haven't been on the property, if you haven't walked it, if you haven't seen it, those maps are not telling you anything in those pictures. So why?
We've seen the property. What I'm trying, what I'm trying to say here, it's not fair to the residents, and it's not fair to the applicant, because it's 11 o'clock at night, we're going to be doing this till 1 o'clock in the morning, and it's just not going to work out. You're not going to get your chance to say what you exactly want to say, okay? And you may be rushed on your also. What I'm asking for is a compromise, that we put you on the agenda first, at 7:30, and everybody wants to put in their, whatever new information they want to put in, whatever new information you'd like to put in by February 1, and we guarantee that we will give you a vote on that night.
The only, I mean, we're going to check...
Go ahead.
The only thing I would say, Mr. Chair, is that if there are going to be new public submissions, we'd want an opportunity to respond to them in a timely manner.
Right. Do you think, do you think if you had, if everything was in on the 1st, and the meeting was the 12th, do you think you'd have enough time to prepare for that, or...
Well, then we would want to make submissions to your board in time for your board to review them.
Of course.
So when would we need to make submissions?
By February 1.
So maybe if you could have public submissions due by January 25, then any response we would give...
But then, we'd want to respond to what you're saying, so it's not...
Well, then, I mean, at some point, chair has to say...
Yeah.
You just put them all in at the same time.
No, we're not going to get ambushed, Mr. Chair. I mean, I think...
No, I understand. I understand what you're saying. I'm a...
Well, if I could suggest, you made your application, you're whoever is going to submit opposing submissions, correct? You have?
No, no.
You have a pile of papers. Were those submitted to the board?
They were not.
Okay. My suggestion is submit them to the board tonight.
I would like to have more time to go back through them.
It's a game. This is gamesmanship. We don't, I mean, it's transparent what's going on here. He has a submission, he's ready, but he wants to hold on to it so we can't respond to it.
But by the 1st, if we did it by the 1st, you'd have the ability to respond, or you...
Not in time to submit to the board.
Well, it's now January 8. You'd like how much time, sir, to submit opposing submissions? You want to just, how about to the 22nd?
The question is, do I get the opportunity to respond back to what he's saying? That's why I...
At the public hearing, at the public hearing, you would.
Yes, and look, and no one is foreclosed. I mean, anyone can ask the board, something was raised, I would request leave from the board to submit X, because it's a very important point, and the board would entertain that. What we're trying to do is just to create manageable deadlines. So if you want to... So that would be until the 22nd. And Mr. Richmond, you would need how much time before the 12th to respond to that?
I guess, would 10 days, did that get us to February 1?
February 1, right. No.
Do you want to make it February 5?
February 5, okay.
So are you going to let the one person?
Is that acceptable? Okay. Now, one gentleman is not going to be able to be there, so I'll allow you to speak, please. I know what you're going to say. I don't know what to say, but I know it, I know you don't want it. But go ahead. I'll listen.
So my name is Randy Florkey. My husband is Congressman Maloney. We have the house here. I would just say a few things. Yes, our house is 4,500 square feet, but it's on eight acres. It's a big difference when you're talking about size. I don't know if you've been there lately at the property, but you represented that there were lots of trees and growth on the aqueduct.
Please, speak to us.
In between. The DEC, or what, that controls the, is now clear-cutting the thing, so they can fly over by helicopter to monitor security. So a lot of it has been cleared, and they're going to continue to clear more of it. So it is not going to be trees and bushes in between.
On your property?
On, it's on the aqueduct, so the buffer zone.
Who's doing that? I'm sorry.
The DEP, whoever controls the DEC, who controls the aqueduct, they're clear-cutting so that they can, they can monitor it by helicopter. Okay? With the overgrowth, they can't, so they're clear-cutting. Okay? So there's not going to be the trees, and they've taken away a lot already. So if you go recently, you'll see, like you can see straight through. Also, I would argue the viewpoint, like, the view is not just the river, okay? It's not just whether you can see the river or not. There are mountains and things like that. So it is not just whether we can see the river. This house, I will see perfectly clear, right, backed up to the aqueduct. It will be right in our line of vision. So it is not that it will not, just because it's this to the river, does not mean that it does not affect your view, Storm King Mountain, et cetera. And so that matters a lot. And so, and, you know, I think that if you're going to surrender, you know, and give a variance from .55 acres, and even if you want to be generous and count the entire lot of 1.43, it's still 10 acre zoning in Phillips Town where they're doing that. And I think that if this was just a regular Jane Doe person who was buying this and didn't understand, and was hoodwinked by real estate. I do real estate, and I am very pro building and development, and I go before planning boards and ask for things. I understand what that's like. I would never, ever let one of my clients buy a piece of property like this without obtaining contingencies for approval to build before it. And an experienced builder should know that, okay? And they did not. I think they're only relying on a board that has a lack of sophistication, they think, because they're from, that they think this board is not sophisticated enough to figure it out. And I believe that you guys are sophisticated enough to know, because if you don't, if you don't honor zoning laws, then what is the point of having them? I think when it's such a discrepancy like this, we're not talking about, oh, it's a half acre less. It's 9.5 acres less of a 10 acre zoning. I think that's a big deal and a big amount. And I think that, like, if you set that precedent, then it's a downhill slope, and, you know, kind of destroys what we're all trying to do and have a beautiful scenic place. And I think it sets a really bad tone, and I would urge you, you know, strongly to not approve it, okay?
Thank you. Well, like I said, well, I thank you for agreeing to, Mr. Richmond. I know it's been a long, a long haul for you. And you'll be first on the agenda, and everybody can speak and everything else like that, but present, anything you have to present, make sure it's presented early, so we get it before here. And what happens is, it's mailed to us, and it gives us time to look at it. So, because we don't have time to look at it at the meeting.
Is it January 22?
Yes. Right.
So I have this. Do you want this back, or...
And you have to make enough copies, you know, for everybody. Okay.
I appreciate it.
All right. I make, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
One second.
A favor. I'm sorry to keep you so late. I thank you for your, I understand your consideration.